Good morning, it's nine thirty and I'd like to call the June twenty ninth county council meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. As is our usual practice, I'll go through the ones that I recognize as being mandatory and then open the floor to other items that you want to bring off the consent agenda. First item is number two point one. Following all of item four, that's four point one, four point two and four point three. Item six, six point one and six point two. Item seven, seven, oh sorry, item seven point six and seven point seven and seven point eight. Item number nine point two. Item number ten point one is an addition related called municipal economic development capacity. That's ten point one municipal economic development capacity and there's a deadline of July thirteenth on that one. So we need to consider it before that. The next items. Item eleven point one S likes Sam. And eleven point one W, item number twelve, twelve point one and add twelve point two section twenty three one. Local public body conferences. Are there other items to add? Counselor Holland, floor is yours.
Thank you, I would like to add five point five and five point seven, please.
Counselor Holland has asked to add five point five and five point seven. Uh, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, I'd like to add three point one, please.
Three point one. Um, Mr. Schenkelberg, can you change the way the view is? We don't, I don't need to see us, but I'd love it if there was a way to do the gallery view so I could see Counselor Wallach's name and can tell when her hand is up for. Okay.
Yes, good question.
Please.
Um, the twelve point two local body confidence, I'm sorry, I missed the section of the voice, I don't have my hearing aids in today.
Twenty three point one, uh, sorry, I'll, I'll repeat them again too, but twenty three point one local public body conference. Any further items, customers?
I'll do eleven point one E.
Eleven point one E, Alice.
And then eleven point one K.
Eleven point one K, what's your counsel?
And eleven point one A C.
Eleven point one A C Regional Waterline Feasibility Steering Committee.
You betcha.
Um, regarding eleven point one, our counselor Holland, or do you want, do you have more to add to that, to your report?
No, okay.
Um, so I'm going to go through it again. Uh, so obviously number two point one. Three point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, five point five, five point seven. Uh, we have six point one, six point two, seven point six, seven point seven. Seven point eight. Nine point two. Ten point one, eleven point one E, eleven point one A. Eleven point one S, eleven point one W, eleven point one A C. And then item twelve point one and twelve point two, which is section twenty three one. Local public body conferences. If there are any further items, customers, are you moving, move the, the agenda, customers has moved the adoption of the agenda as amended, um, all those in favor.
Hi.
The item is carried eight and zero. Um, Ms. Blair, do you have the document for ten point one to distribute? Has it? Perfect, everybody's kept that. Okay, first item of business then is three point one council meeting minutes. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'd like to move to adopt the minutes as amended with the one amendment being uh, with resolution CC twenty three, three forty three. It currently reads moved by counselor to reconsider resolution CC twenty two, four eighty eight. And I'd like us to correct and add the council.
Actually moved it, yep, that's just, it sounds like a good typo, that's on page eleven of your agenda. The very last motion under the speed reduction, I can't remember who moved that, I thought it was Counselor Chamsik, but I can't remember. So we'll, um, I think, given that we have the record that Ms. Blair can check if we amend it to insert the names, everybody okay with? That. If you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve the minutes as amended with the amendment being to add the counselor's name at twenty two, twenty three dash three, four, three, all those in favor. There and. Also Wallach. Not in the meeting capes, so the count is seven and zero and the motion is carried. Next items of business are five point five. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, um. We did speak about this particular terms of reference in May, May sixteenth meeting, and I was looking through my notes just to compare the, um. What was changed on page three, twelve, three, thirteen, um, in red, three, fourteen. And I noticed that it continued to say that, uh, the committee reserves the right to not renew an appointment at the end of the appointees' term and or terminate the appointment to the committee at any time or for any reason that the committee deems appropriate, this is on page three, twelve. Um, but we also have in three point two, the council points to the committee. The council appointments to the committee shall be made at the organizational meeting of the three partnering member councils, so it, it's almost conflicting. Because it, at the organizational meeting and, and please, you know, help me if I'm wrong here, but at the organizational meeting, um. The council makes the appointments. But then, once they're appointed, the members of the committee reserve the right to renew or not renew appointments, um, et cetera, which I find concerning the previous terms of reference leaves that up to council, um, so I'm finding that there is a little too much, I guess, power, if that's the word to use, in this terms of reference for the committee of Ted that the other committees do not have, so I have to vote against.
Okay, so is there someone prepared to move a motion on this item? Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I would be willing to move the recommended motion and with the addition of and furthermore to appoint counselor Wallach and counselor Capitanic to represent Athabasca County on the Athabasca Regional Tourism and Economic Development Committee.
Counselor Anderson has made a motion to, um, to move the recommended motion and also to, uh, appoint counselors Capitanic and Wallach to the committee. Now, um, the discussion, of course, has started, but there's room for more discussion, any further comments?
Mister Reeve, just couldn't get the counselor Holland, I got the first part on the appointments, which all makes sense, the second part where the committee reserves the right to kick people off was which clause, please?
Three point seven.
Three point seven.
Yeah. If, if I may.
Please, yep.
Three point six also mentions members at large may be reappointed by the committee. This used to be also a council function, um, so I, I just really struggle with the, uh, change from giving the committee that capability when we don't have any other committees that do that as well as what that could lead, possibly could lead to.
Uh, Counselor Wallach, floor is yours.
Thank you, um, so I think the difference is that we used to have members at large from each municipality. And now it's a general pool, so it's not each municipality appointing, um, people. Uh, we're trying to pull from the whole community, not necessarily where they live exactly.
So filling the committee with the best people, not necessarily based on where they reside.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Capitanic.
I'd like to add that my interpretation of, of that change also means that if, if it was to stay the same way, it would take all three councils to approve all of the, um, members at large and that could take a lot of extra time administration, that's not necessary. And if the committee is trusted to do the good work and, um, run with the terms and, and references that it has, and that I'm I'm certain that I would trust the committee to choose the best people for the job.
Okay, um, any further discussion from anyone who's not spoken? And I, I would echo those comments, I guess, in speaking to this, the, you know, we've been over this, uh, fair number of times and the it's, it's not unreasonable in my view to, um. Have the representatives that we appoint to the committee as part of that larger group make decisions that that are best for the, the committee and the region. So we've got a long-ish agenda, we've been around once, um. Is there? Are you ready for the question? On the question of the adoption of the motion to rescind policy seven, five, five, eight and to adopt policy seven, five, seven, five and to appoint counselors Wallach and Capitanic as the county members, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? And the count is, uh, five and three, the motion is adopted. Five point seven, Counselor Holland, are you prepared to move a motion? Or do you just want to speak to this? That's the green initiatives on page, uh, three seventeen.
Thank you so much, I'm actually not prepared to move a mo-
So is there anyone prepared to move a motion? Counselor Anderson.
I moved the council approved policy twenty eight sixty Green Municipal Initiatives Program.
Counselor Anderson has moved the council approved policy twenty eight sixty, the Green Municipal Initiatives Program Discussion. Counselor Anderson, or sorry, Counselor Holland, I was looking at you.
No worries, thank you so much, um, as I mentioned before, I am very much, um, in favor of, uh, Green Municipal Initiatives uh, and programs, however, I am not confident that the cap levy being especially um, that we have no idea what type of revenue that that's going to bring in, um, I just do not believe that that is a good, um. I'm not in favor of the cap levy, therefore I'm not in favor of drawing money from the cap levy for this particular, uh, program, um. Like I say, I'm, I'm in, uh, total agreement with Green Municipal Initiatives, I think that's excellent, but I'm not agreeing with where this money is coming from.
Good, further discussion. Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve policy twenty eight sixty, the Green Municipal Initiatives Program, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The count is seven and one and the motion is adopted. Item number six point one is the, uh, Community Aggregate Payment Levy Bylaw, is there anyone, uh, willing to move first reading of the bylaw? And, uh, the additional portion of the motion to propose a public hearing on July twenty seventh, Counselor Cromwell, your hand is up first. Counselor Cromwell, Counselor Cromwell has moved. The council passed first reading of bylaw zero, zero, three, two, zero, two, three, the Community Aggregate Payment Levy. And the council hold a public hearing related to this at nine thirty on July twenty seventh, is there any further discussion?
Mister Reeve, uh, just a point of order, may we have those two resolutions separated? Like for the record, just for first reading and then a second resolution setting the date for the public hearing.
We can split the question, please. Okay. You're okay with that?
I can split.
Thank you.
Are, are you ready for the question? On the sorry, Counselor Wallach, I gotta slow down to give you a moment, that's on the question of the adoption of the, uh, resolution to pass first reading of bylaw zero, zero, three, two, zero, two, three, the Community Aggregate Payment Levy Bylaw, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The count is eight and one and the motion is adopted. On the question, seven, one, sorry. Good counting. So, uh, on the question of the adoption of the motion to hold a public hearing relating to the bylaw at nine thirty on July twenty seventh. All those in favor? And opposed? The count is seven and one, the motion is adopted. On, uh, okay. Six point two, bylaw zero, zero, seven, two, zero, two, three. Is there anyone prepared to move the recommended motion? Or to move first reading of that bylaw? This is the, uh, land use classification change in, uh, the south half, the northwest fourteen, seven, seventy, seventeen, west of the fourth, Counselor Anderson, so move.
Thank you.
Counselors.
To clarify, we need to move first reading in order to schedule the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the purpose. So Counselor Anderson has moved first reading of bylaw zero, zero, seven, two, zero, two, three. And to first reading, uh, to schedule first reading on July twenty seventh at nine thirty. Is there any further discussion?
Again, Mister Reeve, if we may, uh, request that the, uh, motion be separated. And have just first reading stand on it on its own and then a resolution.
Okay.
I'll make sure that we make these changes administrationally, so in the future, it'll be sniffered.
Okay, we can do that. On the question of the adoption of the motion to give first reading to zero, zero, seven, two, zero, two, three. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? The count is seven and one and first, the motion is adopted. On the question of the adoption of the motion to direct administration to schedule and advertise a public hearing on July twenty seventh at nine thirty AM for bylaw zero, zero, seven, two, zero, two, three, all those in favor?
All right.
The motion is carried, the count is eight and zero. All right, um, I see that we have some of our delegation here. I'm not sure, um. And I saw two walk in for sure. There's three people in, so I think, uh, it'd be reasonable to take a four minute break, we'll start back at ten minutes to the hour with the delegation and I'll go welcome them in. Call the meeting back to order. Joining us, uh, for the delegation number four point one is, uh, all of the members of law enforcement leadership in our region that I know about, unless you guys have a secret detachment somewhere else. Uh, so we have Staff Sergeant Hall, Sergeant Paprizi, House and Simkins, welcome gentlemen, thanks for being here and doing what you do. Uh, because I think we have met each other enough times, I'm going to forego the council introductions, um, but I will share that Counselor Wallach is joining us via, um. Zoom or teleconference and Counselor Chamzick, uh, it will be here momentarily, she's just getting delayed on her journey. I didn't have a plan for who spoke first, I was hoping you'd organize that, so I'd like to turn the floor over to, to you and maybe start with Staff Sergeant Hall, since you have the most chevrons and then we can move to the, to the rest.
Okay, so for Athabasca, in the, um, I can speak to the last quarter, the fourth quarter of our, our annual performance plan. We've met or exceeded all of our targets that we're shooting for, in fact, we had a really successful year on addressing some of those issues there. We had some highlights there, being, uh, we had, uh, throughout the whole detachment area here, uh, I'm including here, uh, we end up, uh, getting a bust of seventeen kilograms of cannabis, uh, worth about two hundred thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty seven cartons of contraband tobacco, estimated about twelve thousand dollars. We did a quite a few search warrants within the, uh, detachment area here, which retrieved, uh, several guns and, uh, got some lots of property back, so we've had a pretty good, successful year that, uh, with the enforcement wise. And, uh, as far as the police disability goes, we continue to be in the community, just recently, I'm sure some of you have heard by now that, uh, one of my members started a rugby team at the high school there, that's included of people from all over the county and the, uh, the community. And he's been, it was pretty successful, the, to the point that I hear the school wants to take it up as a primary sport next year. Uh, the members were at the, uh, women's curling wrap-up, uh, to visit with them and interact with the, with them in the county. We were at, uh, quote, one of my other members was coaching baseball as well, so we've had quite a few different events and, uh, if you weren't there at the RCP one fifty celebration, we had the detachment here, it was a fantastic turnout, we had, we had more than well, we went through more than five hundred burgers that day, so it was quite, quite a few, uh, individuals showed up here, so it's just a fantastic, uh, uh, support we're getting from the community in general, so we've had a pretty good lot last year. Kind of moving on to, uh, just the twenty twenty two specifically, uh, I pulled the numbers to, today for, for that and we had thirteen hundred ninety six calls for this, uh, for just the county, which is about thirty four percent of the volume that the Athabasca Detachment covers. Uh, second to Athabasca Town, which was thirty one percent of the calls that we got for service. Uh, so far year to date, from January first to today, we've, we're at four hundred ninety six calls for service in the, in the county. So it does look like it's trending down slightly, although we are seeing still the, uh, issues that we, uh, we had talked about when the, I was last here reading with you is the vehicle thefts are still in our concern, we're at, still at twenty five, the last count here, offenses and then just other property crime, not so much brick and enters, but thefts are, are issues here. So we're putting, putting a lot of attention, a lot of focus in those areas there, I didn't be able to get into specific tactics and what we're doing, but, uh, I'm just sure we are working towards, uh, looking, uh, uh, dealing with the issue, the, the underlying issue on those there. So, subject any questions, that's, uh, the quick update for you, I have.
Thank you, um, Sergeant Paprizi, or we moved down the.
Thanks for having me today, um, quarter four was a while ago, I apologize, we were a little late getting it out. I spent basically the last part of the, uh, budget here for us, uh, getting to know the communities, the councils, um. Did a big shotgun blast of town halls, which was really good. Um, I was very pleased, uh, I was expecting a little bit of eggs and tomatoes, but everybody was fairly friendly and very supportive, um, I was able to bring in, uh, Travis and Lee. And my goal, uh, going into the last quarter into this fiscal year is to really strengthen our partnerships with one another. The common thread is, is everybody short-staffed and operational pressures, uh, sometimes bring stress for everybody, so I think if we do a football huddle together, we, we work a lot more streamlined that way where we can assist each other. The intent of bringing in also Fisher Mile Life to some of the town halls was to expose the general public in the whole area of, uh, all the avenues of, uh, resources we have. And not just, uh, the police alone, so they are, um, I guess more, um, more of a PR on uh, who they can call if they have certain concerns, the CPOs included. Or not everything is always, uh, a high urgent police matter. Uh, if it's good, commercial enforcement issues with some of the gravel halls or something going on, the CPO sheriffs can help out with that. Uh, Sergeant Simkins got a vast knowledge of, uh, impaired driving, drug impaired and a lot of skills he brings to the table, that the public, uh, was also able to uh, get some light shed on that, um. Into, uh, the end of the quarter, we, um. The vehicle thefts are still happening, uh, we're getting a lot of those still, uh, recovered in our area. I didn't see anything hugely outstanding, um, going into the town halls. A lot of the issues coming up in the town halls were seasonal upwatering river areas with the ATV issues, which we're going to obviously work with, uh, Kevin and Jason on that, and they've been a big help. Um, some of the summer villages I've reached out to. They've got some boating concerns, we're not committing to boat patrols per se, just because we don't have that resource right now and it's, uh, pretty tough to get the boats out, uh, in a given day. Yeah, um. So I'm not looking at the boat patrols, but, uh, speaking to the public in the town halls, my intent was is to try and get more exposure in the lake areas for patrols, so try to circumvent some of the problems before they hit the lake. Uh, the boat launches and some of the campground, so just that beefed up and presence is, uh, our goal, not really the enforcement, but more of a presence, getting the education out there of making smart choices. Grab weekend came and went and I can honestly say we didn't hear a thing, which is nice. So the kids are all safe, uh. Sergeant Simkins was in attendance and he said it was excellent. Um, into this, uh, new fiscal year, um, we didn't make drugs a priority on itself, but, uh. The month of April and May, I think we've seized two and a half kilos so far, which is not what I want because that's the bar is too high now. But, uh, so we've had some significant seizures, um. So I could see into this, uh, fiscal year, uh, our drug enforcement stats are going to go through the roof. Having said that, um. That's not usual for us to have significant quantity seized like that in a couple files. Um, but what can I say, sometimes we get lucky. So we've, uh, we've done well there, um, for both of those results from traffic stops. Um, our goal is to keep doing that kind of work with our partners as well and, and try to branch out, uh, some of those skills into the other officers on what to look for, CPOs included, where they might not have the authority for certain aspects, but they can see some of the indicators that we look for. And maybe call us in or run some things by us where we have more eyes and ears out with the other enforcement agencies. Um, staffing transitions into this year is going to put a lot of pressure on me, I'm losing, um. My corporal, he's going to be going on paternity leave for a six month period. And I'm fully supportive of that, because family's important. Uh, I have two transfers coming out for the constables, one's already literally, I think his last days today, um, so he's going to be heading into Basket Chiefs. Very excited for him, he's very excited, I don't think he realizes how busy he will be. But, uh, everybody wants to be busy, so, um. His time here is done, he's going, uh, I have another one in the queue to go. We're looking at probably the end of summer to transition that person, but, um, unfortunately, right now I only have one recruit in the backfield. So far, uh, that's a person that's from our area, I can't say a name yet because a lot can still happen. But they're excited to be coming back home. So we have a local person that joined the force and is going to be coming back. And I'm fully supportive of that, um, I know I've spoken to some members in the community about recruiting issues. And I'm highly supportive of anybody from the area that wants to join the RCFV. And, uh, there's no guarantees you can come back. But I think nowadays if you, uh, were in the lack ofish areas around Athabasca and Boyle. Um, there might be some ways that you can look at making your way back here, so I'm hoping that we can recruit local and get back local as well. Um, my lead steno is also taking a, uh. Criminal and intelligence position in K Division, so it's a very big step up for her and she's going to be leaving at the end of July for that. So we're going to be having some postings come up for, um, our admin staff. And, um, hopefully get some competition. And get some good candidates, so we'll be looking at doing that for most of the summer, as well as trying to trio some of the summer holidays, so. For, uh, for now, from what I'm seeing, some of the file load coming in, we had, um. Rasha break and enters around the, um. Long Lake cabin areas. Um. Same people, same few days. Um, we kind of know who it is. But it's one of those, we're responding after the fact, so I, I can't say that we're having a rash of breaking enters, but they're having spread portions of it, we're working hard to try and tie those people in. The key, uh, for a lot of the property owners and they're catching on is is having a good surveillance systems and we're finding some of the footage is helping us. We're branching that footage out internally and we're having some of these offenders identified from other jurisdictions dealing with them as well, so they're not just hitting us, they're hitting everybody and we're hoping to start stomping on some of these little groups, um, the big search warrant we did, that property that we had recovered. Um, that problem property has now been rectified that those people have moved on. Uh, I think they got the hint. Uh, we also took on their drugs news. And, uh, so yeah, heading into the summer, um, from the town halls, we're going to be focusing uh, on high traffic, uh, visibility enforcement with joint check stops with our partners. And just try to circumvent some of the problems, um. I very, I still encourage a lot of the, um. County residents up in water river there too, is to help us be the eyes and ears and let us know when ATV issues are happening. Because obviously with a bit of a stretch, uh, in resources, we can't be up there all the time, um. Depending on the pressures of the day we have a big area. So if there's problems occurring right then. We can fly up, try to put, put the fires on as quickly as possible soon. I look forward to updating everybody in the early fall, late summer. And I wish everybody a great summer.
Thank you. Sergeant House, the floor is yours. But I'll, I'll get you to turn your microphone on just because that's the only way counselor Wallop can hear you.
Sorry, I just put my phone on airplane mode. I had it thought I had it silenced, but. Yeah, so it's not in uniform today, just. On vacation, so. Yeah, I thought I'd come join you guys here, ride the motorcycle over too. So. That's, that's why I'm not in uniform today. So I'll just give an update. After two, basically two quarters, I ran the stats as of yesterday. So. The sheriff highway patrol and the Lacklubish unit, so myself and my three officers. We've conducted a total of five hundred and eighty six commercial vehicle inspections so far this year. Of that. Five hundred and eighty six, two hundred and thirty seven. Of those inspections have been the full level one inspection. So that's where we're got the coveralls on going underneath checking everything over. Very close second to that would be the level two inspection, which is still a full inspection of the vehicle. We're just not going underneath of it. And my officers tend to do a pretty good level two inspection as well. So we're, we are catching some things that. Some, some people may not even catch on the level one. So we, we're, we're. Yeah, we, we got some, we're still managing to get our. Commercial inspections in with our other traffic duties that we do now. Year to date, we've issued seven hundred and seventy six traffic tickets. That's our online e-ticketing. I'm going to say we've probably of that number, probably. Ten percent have still been the old paper ticket. Just. We do work in a lot of areas that still don't have reception or. Issuing, issuing tickets to commercial motor carriers, issuing the fines to the carrier directly opposed to the driver that still needs to get done. Through the paper ticketing or, or e-ticketing software doesn't have that capability yet. We've issued a total of eighteen alcohol related sanctions. A good chunk of that came over the long weekend. Obviously with the nicer weather this year, summer started early, so we were out. Pretty hard over three days, four days over the long weekend. Of those eighteen provincial sanctions, we all, we also issued. Proceeded criminally with two impaired investigations. And then one of those back at the. Beginning, first week of May, we completed our standardized field sobriety testing. So all four of us now in Lacklubish are SFST trained. To conduct the standardized field sobriety testing of drivers we suspect may be impaired by a drug. And we're also equipped with the, the dragger device now, which we can test roadside for cocaine and THC in the blood. In the body and we've had one successful. Novice THC sanction issued off of that dragger so far. So. Yeah, that we just got that beginning of June, that training. So. Now we're getting into the summer months with, with officers taking vacation and everything. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty. We're pretty eager to go out in the field and work on those skills that we just learned. In the last quarter, we had two big initiatives with Commercial Vehicle Safety Alliance. It was Dangerous Good Safety Week. We spent two days actually over in the Cold Lake Bonneville area because there's a high. There's a lot of trap dangerous goods traffic over that way. It's an area we don't typically. Get to spend a lot of time on because it's about a two hour drive from the office each way. So we, we stayed overnight there and. Got quite a bit inspections done on the, the dangerous goods carriers. We came back, opened up the inspection station in grassland for two days. Unfortunately, the weather wasn't very well. It was raining both days. So we didn't get too many. Inspections done at commercial vehicles transporting dangerous goods those days. Then we did head up to Wabaska, Wabaska Highway eighteen. Is kind of a problem area. So we've been focusing our efforts more up there this year. It's kind of between the Wabaska Highway eighteen calling lake area. That's where they're. Traveling from just north of the calling lake. And the only issue from an enforcement standpoint is there's no real. Radio communications and reception up there. So. Lots of stuff happening, but from an officer standpoint, sometimes it's not the safest areas to be working. So we may, if we make the drive up to Wabaska and we find something good, sometimes. You know, you might look and see we're up there all day and we only got two inspections done. Well, that's because. It was one of those trucks that needed an inspection. So we are trying to focus more on. The calling lake highway thirteen, Wabaska area. Sometimes we do. Work the brake checks here just to try to get some of the traffic that's heading up. Heading up that way. The other big initiative we had was the. International road check and that took place in the middle of May, just before the May long weekend. And that's a three day blitz and it's all the same three days through Canada, US and Mexico. So we had our partners with carrier safety. And some officers from Fort McMurray. Came down as well as our St. Paul area. And we conducted the international road check at. At the Atmore inspection station for three days. I worked the afternoon shift with my officers and. It was, there was a lot of vehicles passing. We didn't find too many vehicles out of service. The day shift was getting. Some vehicles out of service, but not, not too bad. So overall it was, it was good. It's nice to see that. The vehicles traveling on highway sixty three through the county areas up to Fort McMurray, a lot of those ones on the highway are, are in pretty good condition. And having that inspection station there is, is a deterrent. To, to run, you know, to stop people from running poor equipment to stay up on their maintenance because they know what's there. They never know when it's open. I've worked other inspection stations where they've even made comments, not knowing that I worked there. Saying, oh, if we're going up to Atmore, we'll make sure we got everything in order. So. Yeah, it's, I know it's not open as much lately as we like it to, but it's still a big visual deterrent, the big, big building in the middle of the highway there. Coming up for July, we have another CVSA initiative. It's Operation Safe Driver. So. That's where for a week we just focus on moving violations. You know, we look for commercial vehicle moving violations as well as passenger vehicle violations because we do hear a lot of, and you've probably seen it where. Some smaller vehicles don't really understand how to share the road with the larger vehicles that are on the highway. So it's a week long enforcement initiative to. To crack down more specifically on the driving behavior of drivers of commercial vehicles as well as passenger vehicles. So. Yeah, and we'll. We'll be reaching out to get the other enforcement partners involved as that as well. And. One other thing I just got to add is we have been receiving some phone calls lately about. Relating to commercial vehicles not stopping at the brake check in Athabasca. So. Like anything, as soon as we go sit there, everybody stops. There's some miscommunication from talking to drivers or some miscommunicate like. Some of them, they don't stop because if they're going on highway fifty five into town, heading west, they're. Some of them will go to Tim Hortons or they don't even go downtown. So. That's their reasoning why they didn't stop at the sign. The southbound hill. I see people stop there frequently. It's the issues I usually have is, is on the hill here. And I think it's just with the businesses and accesses before it. One thing I may reach out to the community for within Athabasca is if there is concerns with. Traffic not stopping there. The sign is pretty dated, like it says vehicles over one ton. Every vehicle on the road weighs over one ton. So. From an enforcement standpoint, I would like to see maybe the signs upgraded, replaced with more clear language to drivers like vehicles with air brakes. That must stop to check their equipment. The other thing with that too, there's really nothing in legislation that says what drivers have to do when they stop. All they have to do is stop. Now, one with knowledge of how a vehicle works, you think you would. You know, do an air loss test, get out, check your tires. It's a good safe location, do a load check, things like that. But really all they have to do is stop. So. We never get the information as to what vehicles aren't stopping. But when we are working the area. We tend to save the enforcement for the vehicles that are larger with most likely have an air brake system on it because they're the ones that. That can have an issue going down that hill with the air brake system. So. If you see us out there working and you see a commercial vehicle go by, that's maybe a truck and trailer and you don't see us go after it. Don't worry. We're, we're kind of saving it. To the vehicles with the air brake systems, the larger vehicles again, because the science says one ton. So. Any person, any car weighs over that, right? So. Just one thing from a community standpoint, I would say maybe. Because the community would probably have an easier chance with transportation of getting that changed. And, and keeping it in good repair as well. So. Drivers know like they have to stop if the signs faded and worn out. It's. It's hard to. Hard to give somebody a hard time over that if, if they can't see the sign, right? So. Yeah, we have been getting calls for that and we, we do make it over. And like I say, when we, when we sit there. People tend to stop. We do catch the odd one that goes in. And then again, the, the, when we do get the ones that don't stop, they're usually turning into the Tim Hortons or the UFA. And stuff like that. So. Yeah, that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions, we can answer those.
I can share that we'll pass on to, you know, our friends in town. The, your, your comments related to the signs and make sure they, they get that message as well and. Appreciate that. Will, I'll give the floor to Sergeant Simkins.
Excuse me. Thanks again once for the invite. I just. I printed off our statistics for my unit for April and May because we, I think we met in April last time. But I didn't do the whole year. So pardon me if I. If I got that wrong. It's keeping in mind that since the wildfire season has hit, my unit's been pretty much decimated with deployments. Members are going away for six days, stance including myself. I'm about to go on my third one here next week. And that said, my unit's doing lean down on that about a thirty percent capacity right now. By the end of July, I'll be down to three bodies in my unit, including myself. So that with court and leave and everything, we haven't been on the road much in the last couple of months with the wildfire situation and courts and leave and everything else combined, right? And you know, house hunting trips for two of the members that are leaving. So. The numbers are a little bit down. So for the month of April, we had two IRS sanctions within the county, two, two cannabis sanctions. Ten seatbelt infractions were captured as well as ten distracted driving, so cell phone tickets. And in the, in April, we wrote a hundred and thirty seven speeding tickets within the county. And then twenty six other tickets could be intersection infractions or what have you. And also in April, my guys intercepted fifteen warrants, outstanding warrants within the county.
It's impressive.
And then in the month of May. We, we had one criminal code file, not exactly sure what it was. I think it could have been a prohibited driver. We also had one cannabis infraction as well. We had sixteen seatbelts in, in May and only four cell phone tickets. And the aggressive driving went down to fifty three speed tickets within the county. So this shows you the manpower gone, the effect it has on our enforcement levels. And then we had fifteen other tickets. Again, could be intersection infractions or what have you. Sorry, in the month of April, we did three hundred and eighty three mandatory alcohol screenings. And then in May or in June, we did. Sorry, in May we did two hundred and seventy six. We did multiple JFOs with the. With the sheriffs. We were out there for the dangerous goods check and the commercial vehicle safety one was a couple of weeks ago. And I remembered one there that one of the sheriffs inspected and it was a semi truck calling jet fuel in barrels. For helicopter fuel through in, in the barrels inside the trailer. And that truck trailer had no, no brakes on the trailer. So it was put out of service. So it was kind of a highlight of the day. And it was also a U-Haul van. I think you inspected the U-Haul van. Chow, was it Chow? And that, that U-Haul van was put out of service for many infractions, but have noted had no, no trailer breakaway, no trailer brakes and the two inside tires on the duallys were both flat. And he was heading down the highway. So that was two highlights from that. We did multiple JFOs as well for impaired driving checks with these guys. And we, one night there, we hit up some rural properties up in Water River on the roads and. Pretty much were unsuccessful up there stat wise. And we came back down closer to Boyle and towards the end of the night, one of the sheriffs got an impaired driver, which led to a criminal code. So. There was about seven or eight of us on the road there. We had fishing wildlife with us and, and, and. Everybody got pretty much skunk for lack of better words, except for the one sheriff there. So.
We got most of ours along late on this Sunday.
When, when we weren't around, we're bad luck. Prior to graduation in Boyle, myself and Sergeant Purperez, he went to the school and we did a impaired driving slash document restraint talk. In my fifteen years, it seemed like every year where I've worked, there's always been some sort of fatality or a major incident with to do with grad weekend and. Happy to say that I haven't heard any in the Boyle area. It was kind of a proactive talk that we went and did to the students there and include everybody. I think it was from grade eight to twelve. And. Yeah, we basically talked about, you know, making the right decisions and the effects of impaired driving and, and not only by, by alcohol, but impaired driving by drug as well, right? So. The students had a chance to dawn the beer goggles and they were walking around the classroom, walking into each other and, and we, we also. Offered them the opportunity to, to provide a sample of their breath into proof screen device, a roadside breathalyzer. We had pretty much everybody come up and provide a sample of their breath. Happy to say they're all zeros. And yeah, it was a good exposure for them. And you know, we, I talked about some of the stuff that I've seen in my, in my time and, you know, simple little mistakes and ends up costing a life. So I think they were very receptive to that. And. I think it went really good. We had good, good feedback from everybody. So. That's about all I have.
Well, thank you. I think. You know, I would start by complimenting the work of David. McLennigan. It's a pretty long name. It's hard. McLennigan on the rugby team. I, you know, I saw that happening in town and some knew some of the, the boys doing that. And I know how valuable that was to him. And even the presentations from the members of your detachments who were at the senior symposium. It's clear that, you know, working together is the region is definitely better served. And I think, you know, from council, we all appreciate. That your leadership on that issue. I know it's challenging to lose people and that's always tough, but it's also kind of exciting when they're getting career advancement. And if your. Reception admin support is progressing, it's hard to. Hard to not be excited for that. It's clear that there's lots of success in your detachments, even when you're short staffed and so. Would compliment that. Now, I don't know. I'm sure council might have a few questions, but I mean, for me, I hope you have some time booked this summer for vacation with your, with your own important people. And I'll give the floor to Council Cromwell, who may have a comment and then we'll go around the table.
Thank you. Always have a comment. I just wanted to say again how fortunate we are in Athabasca County. To have half a dozen departments, your four, our CPOs and even fishing game. That are out here every day for community safety. How much we appreciate that. And Sergeant Simkin, you made me giggle there for a moment. I do love how people with warrants and they're wanted always forget that if you drive like a fool, you're going to get pulled over. I would, I would always make the assumption that if I'm wanted by the police, I would go under the speed limit and remember to put my seatbelt on, but. Thankfully, common sense is a superpower that many people do not have. So please pass on to all of your departments. Some kudos on, on our end and thank you very much for what you do.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you. I'd like to echo that as well. Thank you for making us a destination, a vacation destination. That's pretty cool. You know, appreciate everything that you're all doing and, and we can't say enough kudos for all of you. And I'm sorry that you're short handed there and I know how much pressure that does put on you, on, on your departments and your, and your teams. But again. To hear the seizure, that is very disturbing. That we're seeing that kind of numbers in, in our community. So thank you for being on top of that. And, and I hope we see a reduction in that as well. And. I can't say enough, enough good things about you all. So thanks so much for coming and passed along to your teams as well.
Councilmen's.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you too. And, and really. Great to hear about the going to the grad class and, and, and schools and. With talking about impaired driving and that because yes, we've all been through. The graduation time and stuff like that. And that's, that's a very positive note that I really take. The graduation time and stuff like that, and that's that's a very positive note that I really take take. The heart that that you guys did that, that was awesome and uh, I just wondered, do you guys do that, Sergeant Hall in 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 Athabasca at all or?
Yes, the members are involved in schools that way, they give quite a few talks, I'm not sure if they've done any specific driving ones in the county, but I know they did some. At the high school slash coordinator, but that's something that uh, when new school year opens up, we are focused on getting back in the schools and uh, and then do that kind of education.
Thank you very much and uh, when, I I guess one question I have, uh, uh. Regarding fish and wildlife, like, do you guys know when they go onto the lakes or or you understanding at the same time that they're up there or? Or any information like that, when when fish and wildlife do hit the lakes or not?
So I don't know if the, you know, when they don't let us know when they're hitting the lakes at all. Um, we can be joined uh, projects with them, which generally I believe uh, we are the ones that initiate that with uh, fish and wildlife. Uh, but um, it's something we'll work on and get in a better relationship with those guys, I know we've got in Baptist Lake area there, got some uh, got some things from residents. About the borders and the issues around that, every year it seems to be, we forget same thing over there, so uh, the uh. We're gonna work a little bit more with those guys in the education department, believe this weekend here, we also have a boat, our C people coming out to work the area. Uh, so it doesn't keep things going that way, but we, I know we can definitely get better in that area.
Thank you, yeah, just add to that, we've improved our communication because we don't share the same radios, so uh. All three units, uh, we've all adopted that signal app. So we'll have discussions and uh, I'm glad you brought that up, because I just said to him, well, we should get fish and wildlife on our signal app with us, so we'll look at doing that and then we can communicate a little bit better, because. We may be in a different area or on days off or whatever, and some whatever they little tidbit or, you know, we're gonna go here and do a road check today and and all of a sudden, hey, we're in the same area, so it's uh. It's actually worked out really good for 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 us, so.
Okay, I'll uh, I'll add to that too, so with the with official wildlife or official wildlife sheriff now. So on our computer aided dispatch system, out of all the agencies here, I'm the, I can see where official wildlife sheriff is. And just like anybody, they're short staffed too, so um, I've reached out to my inspector, uh. And I know this happens in other highway patrol units is is for for an officer's safety standpoint. Is if uh, we have one officer working and in the fish, fish and wildlife sheriffs, those members are usually working by themselves a lot. So uh, what we're, what we're trying to do more often is is get paired up, so if there's a. If we have a highway patrol sheriff that's by himself for a weekend and then there's a uh, fish and wildlife sheriff that's by themselves. We are trying to get uh, together, working, uh, we are trying to get out on a, on a boat, um. To tackle some of the impaired uh, impaired boating issues, uh. There's some behind the scenes stuff we have to work out for that, that's a bit of an undertaking, but um. But yeah, so if anybody can see where fish and wildlife is, I I can just go on my computer and see where they are and uh, on the May long weekend on the. Was it Saturday? The Friday and the Saturday night, we had a fish, uh, a fish and wildlife sheriff paired up with us at our check stop, so when we were up by wandering river, he was uh. He was doing his his checks on the, on the um, the guides and stuff that are up there for bear hunting and then it works out perfect because. We can do our traffic stop, check stop for the the impaired driving aspect and then while he's there, he. They do their thing if they see fishing rods or whatever, they they can investigate that and then same thing uh, with all our increased authorities now, we then. When we were moving to our next location, we kind of popped into a couple. Lakes along the Crown land and stuff where people like to camp and they were quite surprised actually to uh, to see us, so uh. Yeah, we popped in, surprised a few people, did some license checks for, because they were fishing and stuff like that, so uh, we do try to include them uh, when we can, but. Like everybody, we all kind of have uh, specific roles that we we stick to and uh, every now and then we'll get together and do one joint operation, so. Um, yeah.
Sergeant Papresi, you looked like you wanted to make a comment.
I was just gonna say, you must be reading my emails, it's uh, I'll watch the name, but uh, Matthew. They have a community group that reached out to us, uh, they're trying to schedule a ATV community awareness talk. Uh, and they want fish and wildlife as well, so I've uh, we're planning that for the end of July. And uh, the common thread is, is we have no staff all the time, I don't take that as an excuse, so uh, if I have to personally attend myself, my plan. But I reached out to the fish and wildlife boss, Lucas, um, to give him aware to send some stuff as well, so. A lot of stuff behind the scenes where if we get the invites, we jump on it for sure.
Thank you, thank you.
I want to thank you again for making the time in your morning, especially coming on on a vacation, I I hope the bike ride is worth it. And and spending a few minutes with us this morning and and sharing that and I'm, you know, glad that uh. The advocate is here to be able to share your successes, um, hopefully more broadly with the community, so. I'm going to uh, recess for two or three minutes, council, we've got our next delegation coming right away at ten thirty, uh, gentlemen, thank you for what you're doing. I'd like to call the council meeting back into session. Joining us, we have President Broadbent from Portage College and uh, Jeff Johnson, who's connected and does some work there as well. Our normal uh, practice at our council table is to uh, do introductions and then uh, when it comes to you, you can introduce yourself uh, more. Thoroughly if you'd like and then the floor is yours. Um, on my left, we have our communications coordinator, Mr. Schenkelberg. Or close to that, um, Ms. Blair, interim CEO, Vincent and.
Good morning, Deputy Ashton Anderson, I live in the Caslin area.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, elected in Division One, beautiful Division One in the South Rochester Bay Area.
It is beautiful.
Good morning, Natasha Kapten, elected in Division Two, Collington, New Pine Creek and Minnick.
And you know me, Brian Hall, um, I'm in Division Four.
Good morning, welcome, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, the far north, wandering river, Brinad, Blue Jay, beautiful area up there, thank you for being here.
Good morning, welcome, that only Chamsik Division, having grassland at More and Prosperity areas.
Good morning and welcome, thank you so much for being here, I'm Tracy Holland with Division Five and that is east of Athabasca, um, Parkview. Amber Valley, uh, Jeffus Lake areas, uh, across Paxton, pardon me, so thank you so much for being here.
Good morning, what happens? Division Eight, uh, Baptist Lake, I don't like her.
And absent, uh, sorry, not absent now, uh, but yes, absent at the moment is Counselor Wallack, who is uh, the. Elected the area north of the river and uh, she just not with us. It's yours, thank you for being here.
Good morning, thank you for allowing me to take some of your time today. I'm uh, Nancy Broadbent, as you've heard, the president and CEO of Portage College. I work out of the Lacklubish campus and I'm just here to give you a bit of an update and make sure that uh, I'm here to listen as well to. Emerging needs you may have for training, both uh, as part of your municipality, but also for the region. So thank you for letting me have a few minutes. I'll try to keep the presentation part down so we can have a little more dialogue. Uh, so just in terms of updates, the college is in the middle of what we're calling Strategy Twenty Twenty Five. Um, came out of sort of aligning with the previous minister's objectives. For Campus Alberta around partnership and efficiency, and so we have a number of goals around that, I'm pleased to tell you that. We are expanding and um, expanding like crazy, actually. We've had about a forty percent increase in our enrollments in this last year. Over the probably twenty year history of about nine hundred full load equivalent students, this year we're gonna be about fourteen hundred. Lots of that has been uh, due to the expansion funding that we've received in paramedicine and nursing. And those programs are growing, um, we've also had numerous partnerships around degree completion, so I'll get into those a bit more. And we're looking at our trades training, so I have a few exciting things there. Some new things that we're working on that have not really launched yet are the greenhouse operations, permaculture, alternative energy. And something around micro farming and ag business, uh, these are all kind of tied to what we're hearing as the local food. Uh, movement, I'm on the Connect for Food Advisory Committee and I don't know if you've heard, but they got three more years of funding. So they are going to do more research on that and the college is actually gonna launch here in the next couple of months, research on. Food production and other items in the food wheel, they figure out what we need to be doing to support that growing area in our region. Uh, we now are super host status certified, which means we can do training in service quality, inclusionary service and destination ambassador. Those are really short workshops, so I share that with you in case there are. Uh, organizations in your region or parks or others where you're looking to have people as ambassadors certified. Um, blended delivery and free training is growing like crazy, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the community adult learning program. That we have and I don't know who and I need to find this out, who is operating the Kelp for your region. Um, but we have resources to share, so we'd like to be able to help out there. Dual credit is a massive focus for us, I spent some time just before the election, talking to the Deputy Minister of Education and. Uh, managed to get a seat for us on the table, they're gonna be, we're looking at dual credit in the coming year. The newest uh, launch for us in dual credit is a partnership with Saint Paul. School Division to do personal health and wellness, so it'll be the first dual credit course that will launch, that's kind of getting. Trying to get the high school kids interested in the health professions, it's a really cool uh. Choice, of course, for two reasons, one is you don't need a major biology, you just need English thirty. And it is one of the prerequisite courses in all the nursing and paramedicine programs in Alberta. So uh, looking forward to that and we have been told by Saint Paul School Division that when they launch it, they're willing to open it up to other school divisions in the region. It's a blended program, so they, it can be taken from anywhere. Heavy equipment operator is up and running again, last time I was here, I let you know that we were stalling it for a year while we redid the program. Um, we have a whole bunch of brand new equipment, brand new dozers and X, two dozers, two excavators, two graders and we have. Thirteen students registered for the July thirty first intake and we also have um, continuing education work that we're doing all around. Refresher uh, for equipment operators in various pieces of equipment. I wanted to thank you guys, because I know that one of our rebuilds of that program was to build in a placement for students and the municipalities. In our region have been the the most supportive of that, so in terms of taking students to get that real experience on the job. Um, we do have a a vision for alternative energy as a, as a new thing for Boyle, creating an ecosystem. Uh, sort of living learning lab and I'm happy to talk about more about that if you're interested. We've just done a facility master planning with our board, uh, that looks at all of our facilities for the next twenty years and. You know, what do we need to do and we do have some old gals in the fleet, Saint Paul would be that one, which is gonna come to the end of its useful life in twenty forty. So that's kind of our main priority now is getting that refreshed. And I know that many of you have had the opportunity to be in our Wanska room and so we are still very open to any kind of partnerships around. Cultural experience for uh, your region or for your employees. So I'm not gonna get into all the details on Boyle, but just a couple other things about heavy equipment operator, we just signed a three year agreement. With Women Building Futures and they are gonna be providing a number of free spaces in our heavy equipment operator program. As well as in our power engineering, so that's something to watch for for residents of your region. Um, and yeah, that's probably all I'll say about that one, we also have a free class three training, I don't know if you've seen the advertising for that. We're moving it around throughout the region, it's funded by Alberta government. And it was in response to hearing the need for class three drivers, so we still have our class one, in fact, we bought a brand new truck. So we now have two trucks out doing class one melt training and that's um, seems to have a massive waiting list, as you know, they're in high demand. Um, and then I wanted to talk a little bit about our partnerships with Athabasca University, because I thought that's something else you might be interested in. So I mentioned degree completion partnerships, um, this is what we have with Athabasca. Bachelor of Community Computer Science, Bachelor of Arts, Bachelor of English, Bachelor of Psychology, Sociology, Labor Studies. General Studies, Human Sciences and and just a general in science, so what that's been able. To allow us to do is take our university transfer, which is year one, year two, those are all blended delivery programs and all eligible for. Uh, dual credit and allow people to finish, so we've had an excellent partnership going with Athabasca University. And in fact, uh, this round of our program advisory committees, we have them at the table with us. To meet with folks about where our program needs to go, so I'm hoping that that will help. I I'm thinking that if we can create more access at the year one, year two, uh, it'll get more people in our region into the university training. So a whole bunch of data there about students and where they come from at the Boyle campus and I thought you might be interested in the online. To see, that's really where the majority of our growth is, we probably next year are gonna have five, oh, thanks to. Five hundred students or so in the early learning and childcare and it has a lot to do with the free daycare spaces and low cost daycare. But it's just going great guns, um, and on the next slide where it tells you where we're getting our students, you can see that we're starting to draw from outside our region. Even though our focus is on the region, um, and that in the last, I think, four years, we've had about twenty two students from Athabasca. So we're starting to get Athabasca people involved. So the next one is about the community adult learning program, I just wanted to spend a minute there. So the college is actually operating a number of community adult learning programs, a couple of years ago, we got funding to run them. In all the First Nations in our region and we were already operating Elk Point and Saint Paul at that point, we now have Bonneville. So we've got, what we have, our model is to have um, Bachelor of Ed people that are in these facilities primarily part time. Uh, that's what we're funded for, but they could expand and these people are helping people with everything from driver training to living skills. Basic literacy so that they can pass a driver training exam or whatever else they need, um, all the way up to uh. Supporting them, what if they're in a distance program either through Athabasca or through us, they'd be able to go into that site and get support. Get tutoring and also get exam and visualization. So there are a number of communities that operate their own community adult learning programs and they have varying um, focuses, they're all funded, we are all funded. By advanced education, so we do bring the group together uh, once a year to talk about how we might share. But I thought that what um, you might be interested to know is that these are all the courses that we offer at our Kelps. And that means we have all the content and curricula that we'd be happy to share or happy to mentor other Kelp operators in. Um, it's everything from getting the English testing for international people to the basic literacy that I mentioned. And then there, we just got funding uh, through a grant to develop basic digital skills. Which we are focused on in the First Nations with elders, because they're all going on to high speed, you know, they're all getting their broadband. And there was a lot of concern about people being at risk from cybersecurity or not knowing how to access everything being online these days. So anyway, I share that with you, um, in case there is interest in. Um, getting us to come in and help with those community adult learning programs, we also have a micro credential that is. Uh, training directly aimed at people who work in community adult learning programs and giving them a a training on how to work with people with. Uh, low literacy, um, and in a drop in way, so we have some expertise there. Interestingly, we have the most intake on that training is from Southern Alberta, so. The, our Northern Alberta partners are are not aware or not interested or we're not sure. So anyway, but we are still promoting it, so that really was all I had in terms of a presentation, uh, just. In a more higher level, we do have a brand new Minister of Advanced Education. Uh, during the election and just prior, our board uh, really wanted to emphasize dual credit as a really important. Um, focus for the next uh, while and then the other part of our message was really about. How Portage College is unique, we have a unique demographic of students, we have a history of serving indigenous learners. We have forty percent of our students are single moms, these are the people that don't go off to Edmonton to get their training and won't without an organization of our size. And that we also have our distributed model, so. And that we also have our distributed model, so what we want to make sure the government is aware. Um, is that there's a unique reason for Portage to be who we are and how we are. And we don't want to be seen as, you know, while maybe somebody from Edmonton could deliver that training for us. So that's, that's really been our key messaging and um that with that, I'm just open to any questions or I'd like to hear what ideas you have or. Gaps that you think are missing in training in our area.
Um, so open the floor up. I start maybe with one that just, can you share a little bit about what type of promotion uh you do with the dual credit through both? Uh, Northern Lights and Aspen View School Divisions, like do you, do you get a lot of?
Sure.
Support from them and promoting your programs?
Yeah, sure. So there's a number of things we do. So we have a book that specifically marketed at. Um, you know, what do we have already available that we have the transfer codes organized and all that? Um, in our region and we do a lot of promotion directly at. The kids and their parents themselves through report card days and those kinds of opportunities. We hold open houses and that sort of thing. And one of the pieces that I shared with the Deputy Minister is the challenge in rural Alberta that's different from the city. Is that in the big schools in the city, they'll often have a dual credit person right in the high school. So so they will be looking for opportunities for the kids and hearing what the kids want and that sort of thing. In our case, we have to market to the kids and the parents and and the so uh. Uh, comm teachers and others that are in the schools, but they don't actually have a dual credit person in the school. They're often in the division. So there's sometimes a real disconnect. And what we find is that if we educate the teachers and the parents and the kids. They chase it internally to get what they need. And then what we do also is meet with those people regionally. So I have a dean that meets with all of the high school comm counselors and the dual credit people in the region. But it's, it's kind of a battle to keep uh the awareness out there.
I think there's a lot of competing demands in the school for.
I think.
People wanted to to share information and feed information to students, but. Um, I think I saw Council Hall and you look, were you gonna?
I don't so much as have a question, however, I do have a have a comment. Um, well done. Um, this is a huge asset to have this college in our region, and I think it's amazing the the. Role that you're experiencing, I think is wonderful. The dual credit program is something um that really piques my interest, especially with the. Um, the up and comings that we're seeing, um, the different courses that are being offered. I think that that's pretty amazing. So thank you so much. I really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Council Chancellor.
Thank you. Um. I think it's excellent. I uh have had heard many success stories with the Women Building Futures Program. I think it's a. Excellent opportunity for our partnership and seeing the class three training coming in. Your partnership with Athabasca University and also to see with your um, sorry, uh, your. C A L P program to see so many people registered in that one year. I think that's amazing. You guys are doing great work.
Um, thank you very much.
Coach Crummel. I'll echo that. I wrote a note here. Congratulations on your new equipment upcoming and. And what a benefit that is to a region. I was even going to make the joke, if they need a area to practice, my driveway could use a rebuild. But I won't actually say that out loud, so I don't want to get in trouble today. But well done to uh. To your organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilors.
Thank you. I had the uh privilege of attending the Portage College Convocation this year and it was. An incredible event, very well done. Kudos to your staff and to the team who put that together. I just wanted to say it was incredible. Couple of the things I noted were. How many people that's, you know, the stepping stone to improving their lives and having such a bright future and. The amount of. Scholarships and awards that were handed out to recognize those students and kind of give them the hand up on having a bright future was incredible and. Like to commend you guys for organizing all of that as well.
Oh, thank you. It was great to see you there that day. Thank you.
Just a question on tuition, save for a heavy equipment operation uh or operators. What is the length of the course to complete it? What would the tuition costs be to the individual?
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie, it's an expensive one. So I think we're like we raise it every year, so we're in and around that twelve to thirteen thousand dollars. For the tuition. Um, it is a full semester of training, which is sixteen weeks. Um, and the majority of that time is actually on the equipment as opposed to in a classroom setting. Um, yeah, it's uh, there is lots of funding available for students, which is why we're filling it. A not large number of students get funded by Rupert's Land to take that training, so they're through the Meati Nation. Um, but but yeah, most of the students do get some sort of funding because it is very costly to take, but you know.
That funding is not available unless it they're indigenous.
Oh, no, there's other funding as well. So the Alberta Government has funding sources and. You know, Women Building Futures is funding them, so there are, and of course there's student loans, but. That's, you know, if they can get a job right away, that doesn't take them long to pay it back at their. Their good paying jobs, at least that they do get out of them, but yeah, it's an expensive one. And for us, just so that you know, um, tuition for our programs, for our credit programs runs at about thirty percent of the cost of delivery. So we need grants from Alberta Government to run the difference and luckily, we're getting good support from the Alberta Government for that program, so. But yeah.
Sorry, I assume you have people that um to to follow up on Council Gerlock's question to help connect the students with grants that they're, they don't have to find it on their own U. Scholarships and connect the dots for them.
Yeah, absolutely. And um, so there's a number of things. They meet with an advisor and the advisors help them find, are they eligible for any of the free funding? Like grant-based funding, and there is some with federal as well, federal government. Um, and then we do have a very robust scholarship program, so I think we announced we had about. Six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in scholarships, about five hundred scholarships a year that we give out. And about half of those are self-funded, so one of our goals is we're working on an endowment to get those backed by an endowment. So that they will be protected into the future, but it's a fairly significant given. That we have about fourteen hundred students and about five hundred of them get awards. Not always for the full tuition, no.
C A O Vincent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reeve. Having been born and raised in Lacklubish, it gives me a great deal of pride whenever anybody mentions Portage College. Um, uh, the other evening was a guest of the president of Athabasca Uni- uh, University at his reception. And had a chance to speak with his new chief of staff. And recounted for him. The evolution of educational Lacklubish goes back to late fifties, early sixties. When Barry Barry Jaeger started Peter Pun and that's. You know, the emphasis of it, and then it evolved to Alberta New Start with Jack Shields as the director and later uh M P. And evolved into Portage College under Ted Langford and others, and so. Just a great deal of personal pride, you know, coming from the community and seeing what uh what it's become. And what it looks like for the future. And the fact that a uh niece and nephew of mine have worked for the college. Well, uh, Ray Rayanne Bovera is an instructor in forestry and Rick Flumian and communication, so. Uh, deep personal connections, and I thank you very much for your presentation this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent.
I'd like to thank you for joining us this morning and just sharing that with us and the conversation and, you know. Um, I think clearly one of the concerns that regularly comes up in our. Council's travels is the employment and keeping people in the north and. Um, when we have the ability to educate people at home, they are certainly more likely to stay at home and uh so I. Appreciate and value what you do.
Thank you very much. If there's anything that we can do, I mean, we're all in this employee attraction market. Um, to help your organization as well with training, I am uh open to discussing an M O U where. Employees of the county could get some free training from us, so.
That's that's the price train.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. Council will uh break for five minutes just before we transition to the next uh. Next item. Five minutes after eleven and I'd like to call the uh June twenty-ninth council meeting back to order. Um, and I'd like to welcome Jack Huber from Hooked, and I I first met, I think I've shared council. With you that I first met Jack at the North Alberta Leaders Meeting in February, it was in Grand Prairie and. The the presentation sparked my interest right away again regarding the potential for some of the areas in our county that don't have. Fiber uh coming anytime soon, so I'm excited that you're here and uh. And so we'll start with introductions and and then when it gets to you, the floor will be yours. So on um my left, your right is our communications co- coordinator. Mister Schenkelberg with Ms. Blair, the recording secretary, our C A O, uh, Mr. Vincent and.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I live in the Tasm Boyle area.
Uh, good morning, Joe Gerlock, in Division One, which is the Rochester Perryville area in the deep south of the town.
Hello, Natasha Kapteni, collected in Division Two, Collington, uh, New Pine Creek and Minook.
I'm uh, as you know, Brian, and elected in Division Four, which is south of the town into the west.
Good morning, welcome Gary Cromwell up in Division Six, Wandon River, Brainout, Blue Jay, Probs Vita area. And I'm very excited for your presentation, as someone who cannot get internet or cell phone coverage, uh, very looking forward to what you have to say.
Hi, Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland, Atmore and Prosperity area.
Good morning and thank you, welcome for being, my goodness, thank you for being here and welcome. Um, Tracy Hall in Division Five, uh, east of Athabasca, which is Amber Valley, um, Paxton, uh, Jackfish Lake and several some divisions.
Morning, Rob Minns, elected Division Eight, uh. Baptiste Lake Island, the area.
Yeah, they said.
I'm used to being in a dressing room talking to hockey players and lacrosse players, so don't normally need a mic, so. Um, I'm assuming everybody's had the opportunity to kind of go through the presentation. Um, we can kind of go through it, um, I'll say quickly, but just highlight some things, a little bit of background. And why I got involved in the hook technology and now we've kind of incorporated the solar. Is I come from a background, electrical background. Our family business started in Uranium City in nineteen fifty-six. We wired airports. Across Canada for Transport Canada Defense Construction, primarily Western Canada in the Arctic. And as I was telling uh the mayor of Athabasca today, I was on a pole uh at your airport as a sixteen-year-old. Um, wiring your airport back in nineteen seventy-seven, the the day Elvis Presley died, so it's kind of ingrained in my mind, so. So um, we basically shut down our electrical company in oh five um. And I've very done different things in various businesses. But I moved out to Lacine Anne from the city of Edmonton here probably four years ago full-time. And so I was struggling to get connectivity out there and so. Um, with a background in electrical and telecom, I was looking for different types of solutions. I had a friend of mine that built the mobility network for tell us. His cell phone number is four four six zero 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 zero. His wife is zero one, his kids are zero two and zero three. And so when I was on the mobility network, uh, he would come out to the lake and he'd power up the uh. The tower for tell us over at Ross Haven and it was great until he retired about five years ago. So we ended up moving out to the lake full-time and I ended up getting exploring that just kind of before um Elon Musk's Starlink system came along. And um, it's terrible, um, you know, there's lot, lots of challenges to to the system. And a business partner and and good friend of mine spent seventeen years down in the U S. Um, working in the healthcare space, now resides in Saint Paul. And his best friend had developed the hook technology. So when he explained the hook technology two years ago to me, I I was out at the lake, was a little more than intrigued. I started doing the due diligence on the technology and. There are lots of technologies out there that do lots of things. Um, but what really intrigued me about the technology that uh that we have with Hook was was a couple of things. And I'm going to go off script just because I'm not big into formal presentations, but we can answer questions off of it. But um, six years ago, I was asked to go up and and help the Mixu First Nations up in Fort McMurray and and Fort Chip. And we were going to bring fiber into their, one of their buildings at seventy-five thousand dollars a pop. And um, you know, we'd elected not to do it uh at the time. I wasn't really, you know, that verse in terms of the different technologies out there. That really stuck in my mind. Uh, four years ago, when we moved out of the city of Edmonton, tell us was coming into our neighborhood, plowing fiber into our neighborhood. And they spent probably ten million dollars building that infrastructure. And so what's unique to our technology is we can take one fiber connection. And from that, we can build a point-to-point network using uh microfiber or air fiber, for lack of a better term. Saving literally millions of dollars. The other key interest or key thing that that really attracted my attention was the ability to aggregate signals. So we've got a mobile unit that I haven't talked about in the presentation, but. That mobile unit, we can put, uh, we've got twelve slots, we can put fiber, we can put cellular, we can put ethernet. We can put um satellite, that can be Elon Musk system, it can be OneWeb, it can be anything. And we can combine that signal in in um from there, we propagate and can send out a signal wirelessly for uh up to a one-mile re- um diameter. So those two things are are extremely game-changing. Um, we've taken our mobile unit out, demonstrated at number of locations. We were up in Fairview with the mobile unit and just two Bell, two Rogers and two TeleSim cards. We were able to get download speeds of of uh four hundred meg, which is substantial for uh remote applications. And for mobile applications. But being able to combine these signals and and potentially, Brian have talked about where we don't have access to fiber. Is being able to take a microwave shot in and then potentially using maybe Starlink or or LTE, some of the other systems that are out there. So that we've kind of got that fall over and then from there, we're able to propagate a signal. Um, completely encrypted, secure uh to the point where we can direct and control the traffic. So that first responders get priority over people that are streaming uh video games, that type of stuff. And and our technology literally can operate uh tens of thousands of devices out of one radio. So I've I've recapped um kind of the basics of of the technology. Um. The other thing that we've done, uh, when we made that trip up to Fairview and and we got the great success with our mobile unit. It was for um a company that was deploying the three sixty solar towers. And so we ended up um entering into a relationship with three sixty solar where. We utilize their solar towers where we can either bring in the back hall uh in the form of a microwave shot. Or we can use that to build out our point-to-point network. And we're finding that the combination of solar and um and the broadband um just. Covers so many different applications. As an electrician, um, by background, I'm I'm not a huge fan of solar for a couple of reasons. Literally because of the physical footprint it takes up. Um, and and there's some other challenges to um to solar, but when I saw. The solar towers, it's a game changer. We literally can take with these solar towers and put two hundred and fifty kilowatts of power. Uh, in the size of this room with a vertical tower. So you take four of these solar towers, we can put them uh on the corners of one acre. And have a megawatt of power where traditional ground solar probably takes five or six meg or acres. So it's been a game changer for us. Um. We've got different models that we can follow, utilizing both the solar and the the broadband where we can incorporate them and um. And and bring financing options to the table. There's just a lot of different things that we can do, so. I'm going to quit talking because you guys are guys and gals, my apologies. You have, you know, what I presented or or the presentation. But I'd really like to use this time to open it up for questions so that uh we can drill down maybe um. On what your questions are. Um, the one last thing I will say is, you know, outside of of Boyle. Um, and obviously the town of Athabasca, there are a lot of challenges because of the physical size and the people that are living in your areas. So I'm not saying those challenges can't be overcome, but as Brian said, where we can't get fiber in. There are lots of solutions that we can bring by aggregating different signals, including now Starlink, which has just now opened up uh. The mobile market and stuff like that, so. So on that note, I'm going to shut up for a second as my players would tell me, coach, quit talking, we got some questions, so.
Does anybody have a question to start with? Council Hall.
Thank you. Um, I was just noticing on the page fifty-nine of um our agenda. Um, the hooked advantage uh integrated broadband solar platform. How are the transmissions lines incorporated to the towers? I was trying to envision how that all worked, the solar towers and. trying to envision how that all worked for the solar towers and where do the transmission lines go and where, how it's situated?
So I mean, there's a number of different applications. So you know, we can put this tower, if you've got buildings or community centers, we can put that tower standalone so that building can come completely off grid. A unique case study to look at and I'll provide Brian more information is that the town of Sterling in Southern Alberta. Sterling turned around utilizing solar and not solar towers. But what they ended up doing was putting solar in and their area became net zero where their residents don't pay any utility bills. And now it's almost like a co-op where they're starting to generate revenue. So they are tied into the grid. And there's ways to tie into the grid and and kind of deploy the the solar tower so that there aren't a bunch of transmission lines. So that's one aspect where you're tying into grid, but the other is, is you know, you put a tower up, we're we're out in St. Paul here in the next two months or next month, and they want to look at just putting standalone towers at their, you know, their their facilities that they've got out there to take them off grid or help supplement that. So there would be no transmission lines in that instance. So.
Oh, I think that's amazing. And then when it comes like for a commercial aspect, but for for residential aspect and is that that easy to hook up as well or to transition someone's home into a solar tower format?
The the tower, the solar towers are more of a a bigger commercial application. So you know, for a home and whatnot, and the way that the world's gone with LED lighting and loads. You know, you're you're better off kind of going with maybe a traditional solar mount on your roof or something of that nature. So it's really where the bigger loads are that the that the towers come into play.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think this is really amazing and very interesting. It's really intrigued me. Thank you.
Thanks Tracy. So for just clarification, then your technology, you could, in a place say without good electrical access, we could set up a solar tower to be a relay point even to move signal forward or how how far can you broadcast your signal?
Line of sight, we could probably go fifty kilometers.
Okay.
Like and it's it's kind of amazing. We're working with a company, a local company in Alberta called Hybrid Wireless. Hybrid owns probably fifteen hundred kilometers of fiber. The other group that we're working with, interestingly enough, is we're working with Rob McCann. Rob was a his business was called Clear Cable and was acquired by Rogers. So we're working with Rob McCann at a national level with Rogers where we can bring in back hall. So you know, we can work with Bell, tell us or Rogers to bring that back hall in. And then from there we could distribute that the service out from a solar tower. So as long as we have line of sight, we can go up to, I mean, we've gone hybrids gone up to a hundred kilometers, which is a long ways. Yeah.
So in the package talks and you just spoke about the one mile kind of diameter for multiple end users. That then in areas, for example, by our lake communities, a single tower can broadcast a wireless signal to a fairly wide.
It is. Yeah. And and it's diameter. I think we had radius in there, but one radio to to put things into perspective, one of our radios can have up to a ten gig throughput. Which means we can light up four hundred homes with with fifty meg download, which is kind of the the transport are the CRTC standard. But not all of those people are going to be using those services. It's like the electrical service in your house. If you had everything on, you'd blow your breaker, everything is derated. But you know, we can support tens of thousands of devices out of one of our radios. It just depends on what the back hall coming in is. And so we operate on a X, Y and Z plane, which without getting too technical means near line of sight. So if there's some trees in the way, it's not going to impact that signal. So we could go to some of the summer villages, absolutely. And you know, we may have to deploy, you know, one or two or three of those cumulose. But in those areas, you know, we would come in and do a site survey because just because you're not getting good cellular service doesn't mean that those waves aren't there. It's how we kind of pull those waves in. So we could combine, you know, maybe one or two Starlink systems in. You know, depending who's in the area for Bell Rogers or tell us in those summer villages without having to do a microwave shot in. So there's lots of things that we can do and then we would spread that signal out into the summer villages or some of the smaller communities. You know, that you're all involved with and and whatnot. So.
Um colleagues, other questions, CEO?
Thanks very much, Mr. Reeve. So being the interim CEO, I'm the budget guy. Okay. So how does the partnership work? Is you put the investment in, does the county put the investment in or is it a partnership?
It it can be anything that you want, Pat. I mean, and and that's what's unique about what we're doing is, you know, we'll work on a case by case scenario. Our partner, Rob Fort was a CEO at St. Paul, the fellow that I mentioned that had come up from back from the US, he ended up running the primary care network. That's why he came back in St. Paul. And so there's lots of different ways that that we could kind of craft that. There's money out there that's available. Depending on on where you want to go and as in the case with Sterling, they actually own that infrastructure and the ROI was one year before their residents literally didn't have a utility bill and they were starting to make money. So you know, we would work with you. We've got, you know, we could come in and kind of do it standalone, but at the end of the day, if you wanted to own those solar assets and whatnot. There's mechanisms in place that we could bring the funding in that you really wouldn't be out of pocket any money. You'd be able to generate revenue, whether it's off takes from being tied to the grid or or just power bills that you're paying on the existing buildings.
Previously, I was the CEO at Parkland County when we got into what council described as a public utility, that their belief and I think this council probably would be receptive to that particular concept. That for our rural municipality to thrive and to generate economic activity and attractiveness is to ensure that we have the high speed connectivity. And so we've got a couple of communities, Rochester, Winding River, which would be ideal locations to look at. You know, projects, sort of thing. And it's, I think music to counsel the ears that if we can do these particular projects and have it funded without having using taxpayers funds, that's even a greater benefit for us.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, the big thing we're starting to get calls now because it's an economic driver for communities. And as I said, I worked in the Arctic and up north and we wired airports and you got that warm and fuzzy feeling when you left a community because you knew that was the connection to the outside world for them. And it's the same thing here from a broadband perspective. You know, to have kids be able to stay at home from an educational point of view. I do my online medicine or doctor visits, my doctors in South Africa, he comes to Mary Thorpe. You know, every second month type of thing, right? So it's amazing what you can do from connectivity and and keeping businesses in places that people just, they need the that connectivity and then expanding out, you know, with our platform allows you to run you know, businesses that require the internet or to operate things. You know, CNC equipment, all of those types of things that, you know, we can do that'll allow businesses maybe to move out to more rural locations for, you know, reasons for cheaper costs, that kind of stuff, right? So.
Timelines, you know, for say a new client wanting to engage discussions from the first discussions till till the first signal is received in a home, what's typically the the range of time, assuming, you know, whatever the partnership negotiation is, makes sense to everybody and.
From a broadband perspective, we could probably turn something around in in sixty days. Like if we said, hey, we're going to do this, like the the broadband, the side thirty to sixty days. You know, there's lead time, obviously, to build the solar stuff. And so we're working with a group we've partnered with called Silver Fox Management. So they do feasibility studies. They do engineering design on the solar side. We're also working with another group called Aspire that does energy storage. So we would come out and kind of do a full assessment and and say, here's the the path that we need to go in in order to do that solar side. Solar is obviously a lot longer. But the other thing that we can do, you know, we can utilize the 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 base of that solar tower. If we need to reuse that solar tower to bring the back hall in. So as long as we're not generating electricity off of it. We don't have to wait the six to twelve months to kind of whatever that process is to get that deployed, we can utilize that as the back hall and get going right away. So you know, each application is 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 different, but it's not years, it's it's weeks, months type of thing.
Wow. Colleagues, other questions at the table, councilmen's?
Just wondering, you you said some about being able to go through the trees like like close in in vicinity or how far out like can you go through the trees?
So I I live on the lake at Lacine Anne. I live in a summer village called West Cove. And so it's kind of sloped down to to our place. So I had the mobile unit at our place last year and all we had plugged into was at the time was one Bell, one Rogers and one tell us SIM card. And so, you know, I was sitting down and deployed this and we don't get strong signals out there. And and I was able to get, you know, through treat areas and stuff a thousand feet away. I was able to get forty, fifty meg download off that unit. And it was in the absolute worst kind of situation that you could do. So you know, if you're going through the dense, dense forest, obviously it does have impact. But there's things that we can do, you know, maybe a small antenna on a roof, that type of thing, like there there are other options. But it's amazing what the technology can do. I hope that answers your question. And and we're, we've got one mobile unit being that's just about complete and a second mobile unit being built. So we're looking at equipping it with a Starlink system, Bell Rogers tell us. So you know, once that's up and running, we could come and do that demonstration. You know how that mobile unit look, right?
Try it in a neighborhood and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Holland, yeah.
As long as it comes with three days of fishing at Chain Lake, I'm good to go. So I'm happy to boat.
In addition to just to expand a little bit on the the tree issue, how about the valley issue? You know, when I travel, just going from here to home, I'm hitting five, six, seven dead spots. You get into a bit of a dip. You know, there's trees, whatever it is, and I just find it so bizarre that, you know, it it is a hit and miss. So how is your technology when it comes into valleys and and Collington is where I'm really thinking about?
So it it does, just how do we flip through? Yeah. There we go. So I'm just, so you see the unit up on and you guys may have one behind. So that that we call that that's cumulative five. So the way it's designed, the bottom portion of it. So it radiates down. So if you're up on a higher point, you're you're going to be able to get into those valleys and stuff like that with our technology. So it's got to be kind of strategically placed. You don't put it in a low area, you put it in a higher area. And typically it's thirty to forty five feet is the height that we put these. So you can put them on power poles, you can put them on street lights. It's not like we have to big, put big towers. You know, up to deploy them and stuff. So we would physically do a search site survey, but it it works quite well, not like a cell phone where you go into dips and stuff. Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, it looks like there are no more questions. I appreciate you making the drive up here and you know, in in rural areas, you know, I was at a meeting last week and the comment was made that broadband and high speed that without that, our rural areas don't have a chance at competing for for business and it's it's a critical infrastructure for us in terms of long term survival. Survival and sustainability. So I'm glad you're here to share this with us. And I later in the meeting, council comes back to the presentation and has a has a discussion as well. And with that, I want to again say thank you for making the trip up.
Absolutely, Brian. And and you know, if I need to come up again, or like I said, there's a need or desire to learn kind of more about the solar and what that whole process would look like. I mean, in fact, you've kind of been through some of this stuff as a CEO and whatnot, you know, we're available all the time to come up with stuff. So.
Counselor, Counselor Gerlick now has a question. So it's absolutely.
You were talking about on one acre, if you put one of these solar towers on the four corners. And you said it would generate how much like?
One megawatt.
One megawatt. So now when we have the longest day of the year and the shortest day of the year, what would be the highest, what would be the most?
Well, what you can do in order to offset that is is energy storage. So lithium batteries is other type of energy storage technology. So you could store the energy on peak days for days that you don't have peak. So you know, there's obviously some math to that and would be dependent on the application, right? The other interesting thing and and you know, we're talking with Sturgeon County a little bit is is big farming operations, you know, so farmers, you know, maybe not something tied to the county, but big farming operations being able to utilize this or or, you know, companies that have a big power draw, that type of thing. But that that's what we do, Joe, is is there would be an energy storage component so that, you know, we would make sure. And so you could be tied to the grid. Have energy storage and have the solar power. And so then there's a lot of, you know, different ways to handle the the low light stuff. So.
So what what would the general production of power be on in the shortest days?
Well, you could still get to two hundred and fifty kilowatts of power, depending on what we would do. So if we tie to the grid. So what we could do is during off peak hours, so nighttime, that type of stuff, your your energy storage system could be charged. And then during the, you you know, the peak hours, you take the energy off of your system type of thing, right? So you'd never get to a point where you didn't have power if you were tied to the grid, right? And and being tied to the grid gives you again, the opportunity for offset credits and a whole bunch of other things that you can capitalize on.
And the the solar piece, I mean, so we've talked about two hundred and fifty kilowatts, but it's that's like in one moment in time. And so it's then it's based on how long you have the sun. So to get two hundred and fifty kilowatt hours, you have to have everything firing on all cells for a full hour. And that's becomes a two hundred and fifty kilowatt hours, right?
Correct, yeah.
So you get more of those in the on the longest day than you would on the shortest day because there's just less hours of sunlight.
Brian probably knows more about that stuff than than I do from what I understand.
I doubt it. Given only one of us is an electrician.
Well, ours was all diesel generation in the Arctic and stuff like that. As I mentioned to Brian, I wasn't really a big fan of solar on a bigger scale. For a lot of reasons, but these solar towers are a complete game changer. They really are, especially with the energy storage technology that's out there now as well. So.
And the and the increasing cost of power, like that's, you know, a big, big thing for us.
Yeah. Well, and and you know, you're exactly right, Rob, that that footprint is a huge issue, especially when you look at some of the applications that are being built down in Southern Alberta, they're taking up hundreds and hundreds of acres. Not only can you not use it, but the land becomes sterilized afterwards, right? So.
Counselor Holland to follow up.
Yeah, just just real quick, when you mentioned the batteries and the the storage, how big of a space do you need to store the batteries? What, where would you store the batteries for these towers?
Internal in the tower. I mean, I think we addressed it on one of our slides. Yeah, the it can be stored internally. Right inside the tower and stuff like, like I say, the footprint's incredible.
This has been excellent. Thank you so very much for this and thank you for bringing this board. This was great. Thank you.
All right. Oh, and no, we've got, I I don't want to cut it short. So if we, customer girl like has another question. Oh, sure.
And with the towers not be more efficient because you would have like they would not snow and whatever would not sit on them like it would on the
Exactly. And the other, the other thing, like there's voltage drop and line loss. So when you're doing some of the bigger ground mount solar, you lose probably ten to fifteen percent of your power through through line loss and whatnot. So you don't have any of that. The towers are designed and the way they're patented is really on the shape of the tower. So they're they're off the shelf solar panels, but it's the design of the tower and and the way everything is facing to catch the optimum light. The other side where there is no towers is an advertising opportunity and put signs and stuff up, right? So it it was really quite well thought out. And the guy that developed these towers is from Kelowna and electrician as well. So.
Yeah. And yeah, and at the time when the sun is the lowest and you need the most gold, you're, you've got one of the better angles for that, like compared to your roof where they're laying flat.
Well, I had to go to business college first, Pat, before I was able to come up with the bright ideas of electricians. Yeah, I know you did. That's okay. If someone didn't throw me under the bus, I wouldn't feel like I'm at home. So.
I guess what I'm thinking about here is is let's say a farmer puts up, decides to go with the solar, solar tower. And then and then you guys would put the the unit on top that could generate down.
The electric or the broadband?
Broadband.
Depending on the location, absolutely. Yeah. And and in some instances, we would maybe not even use that tower. We would typically will use that tower to to either bring the signal in from microwave or to shoot signal out to other areas. You know, you get a building, you can mount that our unit on a piece of two inch rigid steel conduit. Um you you know, you get a a building, you can mount that uh our unit on a piece of two inch rigid steel conduit. Uh or on a power pole in order to uh. Uh to broadcast a signal, like I said, our ideal range is thirty to forty-five feet, so the tower is more to bring in. The back hall by microwave or to send the signal out to where we want to build the network.
And then in a in a hamlet or a lake subdivision, those cumulus can go on a. Streetlight or a power pole if you get for this to agree and um broadcast.
Now. Okay.
You're welcome.
Now, last call. Thank you again for for.
Last call's a different meaning in my world than when I was younger, just saying.
Counsel, we've got lunch will be here fairly quickly, so why don't we just not break? We'll just pause for a minute while. Jack packs up and then we'll move on to uh item seven point six, which is next on the agenda. I can leave this coffee up here. You can definitely leave the coffee.
One of the ways that we're looking at their rolling motor strategy is is. Thanks. It is potentially through industry partners, so whether it's the co-op or the egg society, you know, they need. They need connectivity to run their businesses. So working with them as a potential partner to bring in that back hall for a community. You know, whether it's a a freezens or or and I'm just throwing names out, but somebody that's in the community. We would work with them on a partnership program to bring that connectivity or that back calling in the community. To provide services. So I appreciate you you bringing it up. That's a great point, so. So just another food for thought. I'm gonna leave a whole bunch of cards um. Here, uh and everybody's got my email address and stuff and um. Got one thing left for you here, Brian, and then I'll get on your hair.
We're coming up to that. Okay, the next item of business is seven point six. It would be uh probably think in that case, in in order to receive a motion to accept that for information. Counselor uh. Cromwell moved, we accept the RCP uh. And law enforcement presentation for information. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question on the adoption of the motion to accept the presentation for information, all those in favor. The. Motion is carried nine and zero. Item seven point seven, Portage College up. Date. Is there a motion forthcoming, Counsel Holland? Uh I assume moves to accept that presentation for information. Is there any further discussion? Nobody's gonna say it. I I want to say that I think there's some opportunities there um in hearing what President Broadbent had to say. That might maybe in the future worth exploring in terms of the the um super host. Training um with uh with even the the customer or client rate payer facing staff at the county, whether it's. Um you know, in the in the. Admin building or in the parks departments. Um I think there are some. Some opportunities for partnerships and uh the. There may be or worth exploring later. Councilmen.
I bet uh. I was gonna mention it to him, but I had the opportunity of of working with some of the people that they've uh. That's come through their heavy equipment uh program and not and and. I think it's a great program. It gets people. With an understanding of of. How to operate and stuff like that. Do they come out uh? A seasoned operator? No, they don't. Uh but you you learn that by experience, right? So. But it's a great program to be having our having our vicinity and 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 this uh dual credit thing is is. With grandkids coming up and I know it's a little bit longer, but it's it's I'm a again, I'm an avid uh. Report or pushing this the the old rap program. My my kids went through that and and tell you it's it's a it's an awesome program to be involved with.
Thank you. Any further comments? So if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion to accept the presentation from Portage College for information. All all those in favor.
Hi.
You didn't want to comment? The motion is carried nine and zero. You're just advanced one. Advance pull. Item number. Seven point eight hooked broadband. Counsel Anderson.
Thanks. Um I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to explore the options of having hooked broadband services. Set up in the Wandering River area.
Counsel Anderson has made a motion to. Um direct administration to explore the options to having the hook broadband set up in the Wandering River area. I've seen two hands for comments, consummate, then counselor Holland on deck.
Great motion. Uh that's what I was kind of. Thinking of looking at too. I was I was wondering if if one of them, one of them towers like set up. Set up uh. Right by the fire station and fire hall and and our uh uh water distribution. Center and stuff like that would not be a. Special place to put it, maybe sell some power back to the grid and and. And be able to power everything up and and have broadband rated rated in Wandering River. I think that's a great idea.
Counsel Holland, you're next.
Thank you, um and I wholeheartedly agree. Um however. I'm curious why only the one area and not explore areas such as Collington. Um and some of the other areas that are really struggling as well, so it's just curious what they.
The motion to.
I would love to, but I was just. Before I amend, I was just curious what the reasoning was for the one area.
Seems like a good starting point.
Starting point.
And then for budget twenty twenty-four, we could consider. Rolling it out to further locations by. Get one.
Get one.
Hopefully in the next sixty days and then. You never know where that can take us, but just because we're between budget cycles seemed like. One would be enough to get us started and then. We plan for the future.
Okay, no, I appreciate the explanation, but I would like to amend just to have um add Collington for sure. To to that list, just to not necessarily just basically define it what it would take and is it capable and what the pricing would be, so.
So do you want to leave it more broad like to add Collington or just to explore other potential areas for?
Other potential areas that are struggling with broadband, absolutely. Yeah, I think that's this is amazing.
I will go. I recognize you. We'll go around and then come back on. Counselor Chamsik, did you? Were you waving?
No.
Counselor Cromwell. Gerlick or Capitonic comments?
Um I appreciate both those uh comments and I think, yes, we need to start somewhere. Uh but definitely the entire uh Twanaw Valley would be a a useful place and if. I mean, we I would be happy to have started in Perryville. Um there's plenty of industry in that area that could use this service. Uh but on that note, um I had something come to mind that uh Councilman's brought up and that is our water fill stations and how. We have had, you know, these issues experiencing vandalism with the Looney payment system and then some of the places that have. Um you know, the debit system being down if the service is not great and. And repairs being frustrated driving there and finding no way to pay, so I really want to to look at this. For those areas and here we have a truck filled.
Councilmen.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna go back on is is uh. They do have the mobile unit, so at the same time, they can always uh if you talk to. This gentleman, maybe he'll bring the mobile unit up. Bang, we can try it in different spots and say, hey, this this is gonna. Power up this, this will. You know, uh having that ability for the mobile unit, I think is is a is a great way to start to.
So in in terms of speaking to both the amendment and the other, I I think it'll be important to underestimate the cost of that solar. That's um that's a pretty. One of those towers is is going to be a fairly pricey unit. But the county also is in an interesting position because I think we have a fairly uh large, when you look at our financials. Uh electrical bill, so two hundred and fifty megawatt, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty kilowatt hour kilowatt system is. Is um. Is probably twenty times bigger than you'd put on the average house, maybe longer, maybe more. Um are there any further comments? Seeing none on the if you're ready for the question on the amendment. To include the words uh and other potential areas to the motion, all those in favor. I carried nine and zero. And on the main motion to explore to direct administration to explore the option. To have uh broadband set up in Warner River and other potential areas in the county, all those in favor.
I.
That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. I can smell lunch.
You Mr. Reeve, lunch has been delivered. Um and start hot dogs.
So I have it this quarter after. Would you like twenty minutes, thirty minutes or twenty-five?
Twenty-five, let's compromise.
Okay, so let's come back at ten minutes past. It's a quarter after twelve and I'd like to reconvene. The June twenty-ninth County Council meeting. First uh next item of business on the agenda is calendars for July and August. Counselor.
Open a motion to accept. I'll put the motion on, then you have your discussion.
Calendars are usually when we do the other, but I'll put you down as the you're gonna be the mover. When I find my pen. I was gonna look, I thought I had something in here that we needed to add. Is there anything to add, Counsel Anderson, before yours?
Uh there is a multiplex society meeting on July twenty-fourth at nine thirty AM. And I'd also like counsel to consider moving the MPC meeting from July twenty-fifth to July twenty-sixth.
So multiplex on the twenty-fourth. And move the MPC meeting from the twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth. Is there any objections to that in terms of discussion? Uh MPC should be nine thirty.
Just gonna see that's all I do.
No, there's also council workshop um and the stars thing in the afternoon.
Mr. Reeve, just a couple notes, please. In August, I believe we had selected August fourteenth for the council workshop. I just want confirmation of that. That was, I believe, my notes from uh previous. And so cross off eighth and tenth. And the fourteenth will be. The interviews for the new CEO. And also, I believe we had agreed that August twenty-second would be Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
And I'm sorry. Cross off the eighth and tenth uh interviews are on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
And um. Budget and finance after MPC on the twenty-second.
Right, that's the only notation I had, Mr. Reeve.
Doctor Chamsir.
August twenty-fifth, Northern Lights Library System and also um I'm hoping uh. Chair Wallack from ASB, I believe, the third, we have a ASB tour.
Also, is her ASB tour on the third of August?
Uh yeah, that's just for ASB members.
Yeah, and then the thirtieth is the ASBB.
Uh yes, correct.
So ASB on the thirtieth of August.
What was that?
Uh it's an ASB tour. Counselor Holland.
Can I just confirm the fourteenth was the council workshop? There wasn't any other dates?
Uh the fourteenth of August.
Fourteen.
Crossed off the eighth.
And then so we don't have any other dates regarding council type workshops there in August, no.
No, okay, right now.
Thank you very much.
And she council workshop, I have that out.
You put put your mic on. The July twenty-sixth counselor you're talking about? I had that as our shortlist review in my calendar, not a council workshop. Well, at oh nine thirty. So the proposals to move a MPC before that, yeah, and do.
Mr. Reed Members Council, I simply used the term council workshop because it's not a meeting. In sense of defined by the MGA, so I tried to find terminology that would be comfortable and fit, so that's why workshop.
Thank you. It was and then we talked about the twenty-fifth once and then maybe it had to be moved because it didn't work for Mr. Magore. So I think we'd always, is my memory of that. Any other customers?
Uh July fifth, I just thought of July fifth, uh is gonna be the first the startup meeting for the. Uh waterline.
Waterline.
Project to Island Lake. That'll be a one thirty start.
July fifth, Waterline Committee at one thirty. So the things that I've written down, um we have July fifth, one thirty Waterline Committee. Um twenty-fourth of July, multiplex at nine thirty, moving the MPC from the twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth. That requires a separate motion of council, I think, uh to move a meeting. So we'll do that. Um and then um. Cross off August eighth and tenth, the workshop. The interviews are scheduled for the fourteenth. Uh the twenty-second a- after MPC uh Budget and Finance. Twenty-fifth is Northern Lights Library. I'm sorry, forgot August third, there's an ASB tour that's for ASB members. And then following that. August thirtieth will be ASB meeting. And we should also cross off GNF on the twenty-eighth because that um the next GNF meeting is September. Any further additions, changes? So Counsel Gerlick. It looks like it could be um I think. For the people have to drive the farthest, that would be the question, I think, looks for them. I'm sorry. Okay, so Counsel Gerlick has made a motion to cancel MPC on the twenty-fifth and reschedule it for nine o'clock on July twenty-sixth. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, all those in favor.
Hi.
That is adopted nine and zero. And.
Question?
Yeah.
The council workshop on.
Yeah, yeah. Let's let's typically we start at nine thirty, I always assume it's. Unless otherwise specified, I assume it's nine thirty. No way. I thought you wanted to see what I record that you better on.
Oh, yeah.
Uh is there any no other council calendar discussion? Um there is actually, sorry, I have a little note here that says RMA survey. Uh there's a survey that the Army would like done uh that has come. They want one uh one request per council, so I'll look at. The calendar in the next week, I think it's due, I wanna say July eleventh, I was gonna say fifteenth, the eleven. So I'll just fire out an email. So I'll just fire out an email. I, I think we should just connect via Zoom to talk about the answers to that and I, I haven't looked at the questions, but I'll try to get a hold of them in advance so that we can. As I think the survey link from memory, I can't, you can't see them. You can't see all the questions too, so we'll get them to you and then we'll figure that out, but um. In my mind, it would probably be, you know, a quick Zoom call early in the morning on the fifth. If that works, but I'll, I'll send further information of that. July, yeah, yeah, cuz I, it's either due on the eleventh through the fifteenth, probably the eleventh cuz the fifteenth is a Saturday. Hey, Custer Holland was willing to move that the calendars be adopted as amended, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? That is carried nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Ten point one is the addition to the agenda. Council Wallack, uh do you wanna speak to this one? Because it wasn't in the agenda with a lot of lead time to read, did you wanna briefly speak to it for us?
Sure, um, RMA has put out a micro grant for municipal economic development, uh building capacity. So Alberta Hub has proposed that our members. Apply for it and then communally use it as a region. So I guess the discussion today is, do we want to apply for it on our own? And do our own thing with uh research or as a region with Alberta Hub on a bigger scale? And then, uh if we decide, either way, we need to decide on some topics that we could direct administration to potentially apply for.
Aside from the uh topics listed on your, the RFD, did you have, we, we talked about airport, um. Did you have any other, do you wanna share on that and have, have any other ideas?
Sure, uh, yeah, one of the um ideas from Bob was that uh they look at usage of airports and. What we could do with them in the region. Cold Lake is obviously part of Alberta Hub, so they have a big air force there. But seeing if we could utilize our airport in a different way could be a potential opportunity. Uh, the other thing that was kind of brought up was looking at green and brown zones, identifying, identifying them within their region. For investment opportunity. Counselor Chans, I'm sure you're excited about that.
I identifying. Counselor Holland just asked for a repeat, which was identifying green and brown zones as potential uh investment opportunities in the region.
So, that's kind of. My topics, I guess.
And I assume your, your preferences to the regional approach with hub to, given that it's own. It's a ten thousand dollar grant, there's not a lot of consulting that that will do on its own.
Yeah, and the fact that we don't have an economic developer right now, um I think it's good for us to go within Alberta Hub and, and utilize them.
So what, what topics um before, before we take on motions, what topics would be of interest around the table, Council Holland, you're waving?
Actually, just had a question more than anything, it, wouldn't it not be more beneficial to apply on our own, Alberta Hub applies on their own and then to join forces, is that? Was that not an option?
So I don't think Alberta Hub can apply on their own because they're not a municipality.
Okay.
So basically. Yeah, basically they would transfer, like we would transfer the funds to them um as a region.
Oh, I see, okay, so. Just trying to get my head wrapped around, I don't think about that.
So, so we would apply, receive the funds and then dump them into a common pool with Alberta Hub and the other municipalities there to, to do a. A bigger project, that's, yeah. Council Anderson.
Um, I applaud Alberta Hub on recommending this regional approach, I don't think you'd get much of a feasibility study for ten thousand dollars, so by pooling our money together and. Compiling data on a common interest topic, I think it makes a lot of sense on how it can benefit. All of the Alberta Hub um partners, I really like the idea of. Compiling data on airport usage and how we could improve or get better utilization of it. And it would also draw more attention to our airport, so that would be uh my number one. Recommendation, and I do like the idea of the green and brown zones, I just think that that would be a much larger undertaking and. So the airport one would be my first priority.
The comments, councilmen, you're nodding.
Yeah, I agree with that, let's look at where we can better our airport access and, and uh and all that. It's a maybe working for us.
Counselor, come on. Clarification, please, uh to Counselor Wallack through the chair. If we set our priorities for this and apply for that funding yet. What if Alberta Hub is a region size to look at blank instead, are we causing an issue right now by picking? Fields or would that be more left to Alberta Hub once a X amount of funds have been distributed into that account?
Yeah, so they're holding a meeting on July thirteenth for their partners. And that's kind of where the, the main discussion is gonna happen, so they wanted us to come to the table with our priorities and then. We would obviously come back to council and get approval that way.
Okay, so through the chair, if I may, so we can give you A, B, and C, and you might come back with A, F, and W. And then we just move forward from that point. Thank you.
Counselor Chans.
Thank you, nailed it, Counselor Anderson, when it comes to the airports being a priority, the green and brown zones that eventually can be. Identified and done in-house and um, you know, ten thousand dollars isn't a lot of money to really. Put towards a whole heck of a lot and that regional approach could be a big beneficial factor.
I also like the uh, the, the idea of the, the researcher on enhancing municipal capacity to support economic development, I mean, I think it's a term we talk about a lot, but. You know, when you try to nail down specifically, what is it, it's hard to, it, cuz it's so many. Little things, um, you know. Almost like a watch, right, it's, it's a, it's a thousand little gears that make that work and all we ever, you know, see is. The result, but it's all that business going on in the background and so if there are ways we can, you know, dig into what are the best practices, how do we enhance this? Cuz there are some areas that are being very successful and others that are less, let's figure out how to learn from that too, uh CEO.
Mister Reeve, the Chair to all Members Council, uh I exchanged emails with Counselor Wallack earlier this morning, so just to uh advise you. The Alberta Hub is holding a meeting in Saint Paul on July thirteenth from ten AM to two PM. And they were inviting the CAOs or the Economic Development Officers from each of the municipalities to attend. To develop that priority list, I've made a commitment that I am available, check my calendar. So I will be attending to represent council's interests and the priorities that you just spoke of. And be pleased to present that report back to Council on July twenty seventh.
So is there anybody that wants to talk about alternate priorities or kind of the, the? The, the main ones that are here, then are that airport usage bit, the identification of green brown zone for future development. And the, the concept of the enhancing municipal capacity to support ED. If not, Counselor Chans.
And we could always look into the possibilities of rail, I guess, too, but I think right now airports would be a bigger priority.
Could put rail and um. Council Wallack, you're understanding, if we went kind of with, you know, the top four, it's, it's a place to, to begin the discussion and, and um. No harm in a few more rather than less.
Yeah, totally.
Are you willing to move your recommended motion?
Sure, I would move that.
With the topics of airport usage, green brown zones, municipal capacity and rail?
Yeah.
Rail. Okay, Counselor Wallack has moved, made a motion that uh. Athabasca County Partner with Alberta Hub on the municipal um. Development Capacity Building Micro Grant and to use the funds from the micro grant on the following priorities uh with. With Alberta Hub at airports, green brown zones, enhancing capacity and rail. And the idea that this is commonly pooled funds. So any questions on the intent of the motion?
I just wondering, what is the date uh which the application has to be made?
It'll be after July thirteen.
One second.
July thirtieth, you think, CEO?
Cuz it has to come back to council.
And we still have time. The CEO thinks July thirtieth, so we do have a council meeting in late July and time to ratify things that has needed then.
Uh, August fifteenth.
August fifteenth. And the worst case is if we really needed, you know, we can do a single item special meeting and just meet by Zoom for ten minutes one morning. On the question of the adoption of the motion that the county partner with hub on the municipal economic development capacity micro grant and use the funds um. On the priorities of airports, green brown zones, enhancing municipal capacity to support economic development and potentially rail, all those in favor? That is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Eleven. Point one E, Councilman, you wanted to talk about the Alice Committee?
Yeah. Yeah, I just thought I just do a verbal report for right now, just regarding the uh Alice meeting we had on, on June twenty seventh. It, uh, we had a national update from, from uh Alice Committee there. There's gonna be a couple of tours coming up, uh Mountain View County, they're gonna get, have a summer get together there. It's gonna be in, in last week of September and, and that, and that's where. Coordinators and, and if, if anybody on the committee wants to go and, and just. Meet up with other Alice, Alice Committees and, and discuss. Different ways of, of doing their, their work in, in their own regions and that and uh. It's uh. Our coordinator will probably end up going to it just to, just to put their heads together, right? Another tour coming up, uh July and, and sometime in July, I don't know the dates exactly is uh, what they call is uh. Cargill Tour, uh what they're gonna do, Cargill is a big sponsor of, of Alice. And Cargill is gonna send a few people into Alberta and just see where, just see where their money is being spent. Go to some of the locations where, where the projects have been done, it's more. In, in uh, uh Southern Alberta, where they're gonna hit both three different municipalities down there and look at their, their stuff there. Also, Alice is uh, uh, joined up with uh, uh, they went across the border into the USA. Um, with the Golden Hills USA Conservation Group. Supposedly this conservation group down in, down in the States like, likes all the. All the dynamics of Alice, so they invited them to come down and now they're actually gonna be partnership with them. So that's a, that's a pretty good break, breakthrough to get into. Must mean Alice is doing something right in Canada to, for a USA outfit to, to pull them in, so. Uh, the other thing is uh, we went through projects, we approved another four projects. One big one actually in Athabasca County. It, it came to, came to light through Alice that, that this uh. Federal outfit called Ozones or something like that or Zones. They're another conservation group, there's so many conservation groups out there, it's crazy, but this one here. It's, it, it's a huge uh shelter built project, twenty six thousand seedlings. And through the federal program, they actually uh hire the salt and. And employ people to go on, cuz that's a huge, that's, that's, that's a major ceiling project. And, and it's in Athabasca County. And it's actually completed, so we were able to jump on with them and, and uh. And put some of our Alice money into it too, and, and that, so there'll be, there'll be, it's huge, it's, it's a big thing. And uh, there was one, there was one project uh that came back uh. That was approved and it came back cuz it's over, it was over budget. What ended up happening was, was the estimate uh was changed a little bit and, and anything. Over the estimate, like if it's over fifteen percent, has to come back to be, to be approved by. By the pack again and, and, and this one, uh, there was a few different reasons why it was over, over, over budget, it was. Cheaper for, for the uh. Like for the fence posts and stuff like that, but the way they were installed using, using labor and stuff like that, a contractor pushed it up over. So, that project was actually, the, the over expenditure was actually declined just due to the fact that, that's, that's another. We didn't wanna set a precedence where all of a sudden you just bring in, all of a sudden your, your project goes way out of whack. And, and you're looking for more money, so we didn't wanna set a precedent or say, yeah, no, we'll just start funding these things and. And uh rubber stamping them, so, so. It's a, it's a very good group of, of uh members that are, that are watching this, so. So, yeah, that's, we had a very great meeting and uh. The next one is gonna be for November eighth, uh to start on our next, next year, next year's projects and not start getting them approved and not so. So, yeah, that was kind of like. And budgets are going well, budgets are, uh, we're actually gonna be under budget on, on. On what money we have to put forward to these projects, but the great thing about Alice too is, is that. If we're under budget and another Alice Committee down south. Has some projects on the, on the side cuz they don't have enough money, that money gets a lot of that way. With the understanding that if we end up having projects. We can get that budget money from them after, right, you know, like maybe the next year we're, we, we need a whole bunch of money for some reason, so. So it's a, it's a. The budgeting is a kind of a nightmare though, cuz there's so many different partners coming in, like you got Alice and you got uh. There's silent, silent sponsors and, and, and all it, and some of these. Some of these sponsors can be spent in a certain way and some of them can't be, so they got, oh, the. The accounting on that end has got to be just incredible, but somehow they do it, so, so that's kudos to them, so.
Is there um opportunity through Miss Card to celebrate the successes of that big project by maybe doing a bit of. More direct conversations with the local media?
Uh, yeah, I could talk to her on it a little bit, it's sometimes the, the, the landowners don't want their names thrown out there, but. When you get a big project like that, it'll be, there'll be signs put up, like I know there's some of the, some of the uh projects that we got going on right now. Um, there's gonna be signs put up along the edge of the road, um. What ended up happening is in this, in about a month ago, beginning of June, um, the coordinator and. Sarah with the Athabasca Watership Council went out. They have to measure the fences and, and all this stuff that, that we're paying for and not, so they went out there and they did a drone. Their own video of, of, of some of these projects and it's. That, that will be shared, um, I don't know if it'll be through. Uh, it's probably on, on the Alice website or, or something like that, but we just got a quick glance at it and it looks. It's very good, uh, their own video, so, so chances are, yeah, there'll be, there'll be uh.
I just think, you know, with all, a lot of the work that happens at our table is sort of just quiet. Good things go on and we have to look for those opportunities to.
Yeah, we had a, excuse me, we had a bit of a setback there. Uh, I don't know if anybody's reading the paper, but the bar had uh, uh, public workshops was broken into a, and, and. The only truck they stole was the Alice truck. And uh, and what ended up happening is, is uh, it's coordinator had a whole bunch of signs in the back of the truck to, to uh. To start putting up at some of these projects and of course they were sold for scrap. And all this stuff, they did, they did end up finding the truck, but it's, it's bastion pretty good, stuff like that, so, but uh, so. There is ways of, of uh. Putting, you know, getting the word out literally better as you're driving down the road, you'll see these big signs and on these big projects, they're putting up bigger signs. Like uh four by eight sheet supply, which are gonna be set up with, with the project number and. Like, uh, four by eight sheet supply, which are gonna be set up with, with the project number and, and all the stuff going on, so. You betcha, no, it's a, it's a, it's a very good, very good, uh, conservation group.
Any other questions for councilmen's on the, that information? So, seeing none, councilmen's, the floor is yours, uh, as it relates to eleven point one K Alberta Watershed Council. Athabasca Watershed.
Oh, yeah, okay, uh, the reason I threw that down, thank you, uh, Counselor Cromwell for, for catching the AGM meeting and. Not putting my name forward for president. And, uh, um, the reason I, I threw this on is just to give you a quick update on the canoe brigade that's gonna be coming down. Uh, there was, we had a, a quick Zoom meeting on Monday, Monday evening. Cuz of the, uh, water level of the river in that day and, and, uh, people were starting to get a little excited. And. And, uh, these, these paddlers are very passionate, very passionate group and, and. They have no problem with water level right now, they're, they're actually looking forward to it, they said it'll be less paddling. So, so I just wanted to let everybody know, and then we had another one last night, uh, quick Zoom meeting on that, uh, again, just on the preparations and not. And, uh, yeah, so they're gonna be coming down the river on them, they'll be landing here on the thirteenth still.
Thank you.
Time, uh, in around four o'clock.
Counselor Cromwell has a question for you.
Actually, not a question, just a comment, there will be a written report coming in for that meeting that happened in Lacklavish that I attended. And that'll give all the rest of that information from what transpired during that event.
Counselor Chans.
Just a little, uh, update, we've had a couple resonant, uh, resonations, um, from our county library board from the town and the village. The board will be having a meeting in September, one of the topics of discussion will be membership and, uh, putting into words form. And, uh, seeing what that will look like, so it will be coming to council sooner or later.
Thank you. Eleven point one W is Greater North Foundation and just, uh, we met last. Since Thursday, we met on Monday of this week. Ultimately, the, the items to highlighted, things to highlight for you, there's, uh, a survey done on the fa- family experience survey. And while the number of participants is not especially high, they don't send out that many surveys. Um, all the results that came back were, uh, improvements over last, last survey that occurred. And, uh, really the primary focus of the meeting was to review the business plan. Or the portions of the business plan that get updated annually and go to the government of Alberta. And so we've done that, um, and then, uh, a fair bit of discussion occurred around, um. Getting in touch with the new minister and, uh, doing more work on the funding for capital maintenance and repair. Um, as you know, there are, uh. Many of the homes, uh, that Greater North manages are owned by the government of Alberta. The ask list, the capital asset, uh, management list is about a million dollars right now in terms of repairs that. We'd like to see in twenty twenty three, twenty four. Um, last year, I think the total funds we got and, and, uh, were about seventy eight thousand. So it's, it's hard to maintain there are, you know, government assets on, on this, uh, fraction of, uh. Of a dollar that they're, they send us, um, I know that's a problem across all housing management, uh, boards. And something that they're working, you know, the, the. The consolidated agencies where the HMBs get together into a, a group like RMA. Or the, uh, CAOs get together in their own CA, CAO Association, it's one of the topics that is up on those agendas too, so there's sort of multiple. Pushes, but, um, we went from having Minister Jeremy Nixon to, uh, Minister Jason Nixon who. My understanding is they're brothers, so, um, maybe there'll be some continuity there, I don't know. Um, eleven point one AC consummate.
Have to make it, uh.
You're hogging the floor.
Well, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not gonna go there, um, the region, regional, uh, steering, uh, committee for. For the water line, I'm very excited, uh, finally got a, uh, date set up July fifth. For a meeting, it'll be our first meeting, there's, uh. Uh, Island Lake and then, uh, Summer Village and one person from. Uh, West Baptiste, Summer Village. Myself from the county, Jamie Guyerson from the commission, it's gonna be on steering committee. And, uh, possibly, possibly one other person from, from the Summer Village of, uh, Whispering Hills. They, uh, they had reached out there, so, so we're gonna have our first meeting on fifth. So just, just a quick. Jamie Guyerson's really excited to be on there too.
Well, all these, all these, uh, steps forward take, take time and it's good to, to get together. It would be in order to receive a motion to accept the reports for information. I don't know what a council chams are cuz I haven't, uh, got kind of tied. Council Chamsak has moved, we accept the reports under eleven point one for information, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
That is a motion adopted nine and zero, it would be in order to receive a motion to enter closed session. Councilman's has moved, we enter into closed session, all those in favor?
Hi.
That is adopted nine and zero and the motion is adopted, we'll break for like just, not really break, but just give us two minutes to.